All and determination of quorum. And so I see Alan Pinkerton, I see Julia, I see Ron, I see Wes, I see me, that's five people. And I believe we have a quorum. So we've determined that. Amendments to the, any amendments to the agenda? Seeing no hands, we'll move on to the next one. Acceptance of the minutes of prior meeting, June first, twenty twenty-two. Anybody have any changes to last month's minutes? Seeing none, should look at you at least Wes. Seeing none, we'll move on to, we'll accept the agenda and move on to, oh sorry, that was the minutes. Informational exchange and town officials. George, did you want to say, Mr. Planner?
Yeah, just to give the board an update on some of the things that we have going on. I did meet with the Conservation Commission on the Resource Protection District revisions on May twenty-sixth. And that has two parts. The first part is to correct errors within the existing Resource Protection District that are based on outdated information and inaccurate mapping. And Phase Two or Part Two will be to look at adding areas outside of existing resource protection that meet the same comprehensive plan Resource Protection criteria. And that split has been approved by the Select Board for putting on to the next town meeting warrant. And the, we've asked the Greater Portland Council of Governments to possibly do a citizen survey on the town's website. That would be an opportunity to gain public input on that issue. I have prepared-
I know those folks are planning the public meetings, I won't use the term hearing, but public meetings.
And I've prepared a database of all the properties that are affected. There are a total of four hundred and eighty out of the two thousand parcels in town that would be affected by those zoning changes. Last year, or this, earlier this year, for Part One, which was on the last town meeting, there were three hundred and sixty property owners that we sent out mailings to. And there are an additional hundred and twenty that would be affected by the second part of that.
Can, can, Tommy, just, so what we're talking about, for clarification, so we're talking about two parts. Both parts will be on the, are either separate articles or voted on the same public town meeting?
Yeah. And so, yes, you're right, we have discussed doing some informational meetings right after Labor Day to try to get public input on that. I'm also working with the Historic District Commission on similar overhaul of their program. And they are looking at me preparing a report that explains it all and provides the background for how we got to this point of their proposed overhaul. And they too will be looking at having public informational meetings on that. So we may want to coordinate the, the three different tracks of what the Conservation Commission is working on, what the Historic District Commission is working on, and what the Planning Board is working on. You will recall, we had a workshop on June eighth, and at that meeting, you decided that with all of these other pieces of land use changes going on, you would focus on the new affordable housing law, which requires zoning changes on density in Durham. And so we can maybe coordinate some of that with those other initiatives on the, on the land use ordinance changes that are coming.
And we also talked about on the roads.
Yes, you did also decide that you wanted to give another crack at the back lot driveways to allow those to be, not have to build a road for a single house, putting, putting that back on.
And one more interruption for you, George, is when I went before the town, the selectmen in May, they asked that we consider verbiage that said acceptance of a private road would be only at a town meeting. To me, to clarify, that was, I think that came up as a hot button on, at the town meeting, so.
Acceptance of a private road.
A private road, so if somebody came in, ten years, yeah, somebody came in and said, you know, our, our roads are all hacking back, we want the town to take it over. The approval of, if there is an approval, would be through at a town meeting, not, make it clear that's not the selectmen or Planning Board who had, who approved that.
Wasn't that part of the roads issues? So, and we tabled that for now, right? That's part of that whole road?
It was, but we, we were, and again, we don't have to, but they asked us to, to take a look at that.
Just to provide some clarification, because right now, it's, there's nothing that says how you get a road accepted.
That seems like a simple.
There's no road, there's no road acceptance policy in the town.
Taking that piece out and putting that in the warrant for-
It would, I think it would be an, the way I think-
They just asked us to look at it.
Yeah. And if we did it, it would be a statement that said, private subdivision roads, or whatever term. We're not talking about changing the name of private to whatever it may be, but those roads must be, to be accepted by the town, has to be voted on and approved at a town meeting. So it's kind of a simple-
Which has been, which is the case.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. So last thing I would say is that you, at the June eighth workshop, suggested that you need, you asked me to put on an agenda of the Planning Board, a discussion of the public outreach. And so that is item seven on this agenda, which you may or may not.
Thank you.
Yep, that's it for me.
Okay, residents, and this is your opportunity as residents to speak about things other than the project before us. So there will be a public hearing, two agenda days down to talk specifically about Deer Creek Crossing, but this is any other planning issues that you want to talk about outside of that project? Seeing none, non-residents? Seeing, I think, no non, well, no non-residents who want to talk about it? We'll move on to continuing business, and this is the completeness review. And as somebody said, we started that last week, there were two items, several items, excuse me, that we asked to, to be looked at, at, at this meeting. And I will kind of turn over the initial presentation or review to Mr. Steve Barger, our planner.
Yeah, so you did on June first issue a letter of incomplete application. And you identified seven deficiencies in the application for Deer Creek Crossing. The first being the location map, which did not meet the requirements of the ordinance. The applicant has submitted an updated one, which added some information. You also pointed out that under Section six point seven C three, the parcel corners are supposed to be monumented, and that was not done. There, I did not receive any information relating to that other than requests by the applicant through their consultant to possibly consider that as, to do this, all the monumentation at one time, which I'm assuming would be a preliminary approval condition, is what they might be looking for. Another issue was the judgment of the prior property owner, was, went to court with the town, and that violation was settled. And Ian had brought up that that summary judgment is a potential encumbrance of the property that needs to be clarified and documented. So that was another issue, again, did not receive any input from the applicant on that item. Test pits for all of the lots have been submitted, so they meet that submission requirement. And they did provide a new aerial photo overlay of the plan showing the vegetative cover of the property to address that issue. They have identified on the location map, the location of the thirty-six inch culvert under Hollowell Road on that feeder of Dire Brook. And then finally, they did submit a new plan with the floodplain along that portion of the brook that just enters the property. So at this point, the board will again need to make a decision of completeness, and I did include in your packet a draft letter of incompletion on those two issues. And I did suggest to the applicant's consultant in an email, three options for that, dealing with those last two items. One would be to provide the documentation. Secondly, would be to make a case that those two outstanding items are not germane to substantive review of the subdivision and could be waived. Or thirdly, to present draft preliminary approval conditions that ensure that those outstanding issues will be addressed as part of the final plan review. So I did provide them with those three options. And then if the board determines that you feel comfortable that the application is complete, I did include a draft completeness letter as well.
So, thank you, so as a quick summary, the ones that, the, that are not, that are up for discussion tonight, well, first of all, we're up for discussion on any of them, but the two that are in question tonight are Items B and C under the town planner's comments. So, does anybody have any comments on, other than, you know, A and, A and then D through the rest? Okay, okay.
Just a couple of questions. The zoning districts, so I see Resource Protection on here. And then do we show the rest of the zones somewhere? I see Aqua for Protection, or the rest of the zones? Is this where they're located, they're shown, all on here? Okay. All right. And then the culvert, so there was one found, just one? Because it asked for a adjacent, so no others even anywhere near the brook or?
No, the brook kind of comes down, it only crosses the road once.
There is one under the temporary crossing, that's a fifteen inch culvert.
Yeah.
It's noted in the application, it's not shown on the plan.
So.
And it comes out when you do the construction?
They've said that they plan to remove it.
So I think it should be shown, right? If we're planning to remove it.
It's, I think it's shown as a note.
Okay. So the only reason, like, there's a lot of wetlands and water on this property, so I think knowing where the culverts are is pretty crucial. Just for an overall review of any impacts and anything like that. So we know of the one, the thirty-six inch, there's another one that I hear is mentioned, but not, like, shown on the plan.
It is, if you look at the, I think there's a demo note that says this culvert will be removed, so there's a note, it's on the, it's not on that, it's not on the site layout, it's on the, either existing conditions or the demo and, or the, yeah, it's on one of the plans.
So those are the only two then?
Yep.
Okay. Sorry, where is it? Just I want to see where the note-
Where the culvert is?
Yeah, the second one.
It's right, right, see where the driveway crosses the stream? Go up, up, up to your right, up, up to your right. Yeah, right there, right there.
Right here?
Yep.
Right here? Okay. So I don't see a note, do you guys see a note anywhere where the culvert is located?
I forget which drawing it's on, but I remember, I remember writing it up and talking about whether or not, or when it was going to be removed and.
I mean, am I the only one that has this concern of showing where?
It doesn't bother me because it's coming out, I mean, so.
I guess what would be your concern about it?
So we're, why are we taking it out? Is it doing everything?
It was, it was a bad, it was a, like, when they logged it, it was a logging crossing. So like, this whole, this whole site, every wetland you see here is essentially a byproduct of the loggers that came in and they cut a swath down the middle, which is that little drainage area that you see there. They put a smaller culvert than they should have, right there, at the crossing that we're pulling out, which has flooded everything up of that, so.
So the, so the culvert in question is the one that was put in for the-
Is it right here?
Yeah, uh, yeah.
So, yeah, so that whole crossing is coming out.
Yeah.
So I think what we are being shown-
Yeah, it's where the wetlands split. Where the, where those wetlands, see, there's a split in the wetlands right there? Yep.
So when you take the culvert out, it's actually going to increase the wetlands?
Sure.
Yeah, it's going to cover the-
Saving the world.
So, I mean, there is going to be a change, right? There's going to be an impact from removing-
It's not an impact to any wetlands.
Well, I-
I think it's, it's more of a restructuring or restoration.
If I understand, the crossing goes away, the culvert goes away, there's a new crossing, a new culvert, and you've, these are all questions.
Yep.
And you've considered the new, the impact of the new crossing, the new culvert?
Yep.
Those are questions, so.
Yep. Yeah, we've matched our culvert to the bigger one downstream, to the thirty-six inch. And we're going to pull the log crossing.
Any other questions on A and then D through G, I guess it is? Get in, get into it.
Are you skipping B?
I'm, but I have that as a separate question, or discussion.
Continue the thirty-six inch, just one more question about that. So it's an existing thirty-six inch, and then you're keeping it as a thirty-six? It doesn't need to be increased or anything? The culvert, that stain, you're removing one.
Yep.
Does the other one need to be?
The downstream one?
Yeah.
It, no, so that's that, the whole hydro, that, that's, that's what the stormwater quantity report is, is showing, that we don't increase our storm, we're not increasing our runoff leaving this thing.
So on A and then D through G, any other questions? And we'll go back to, we'll go to Item B in your comments, questions on the corner, marking of the corners.
I would-
And recommendation on what we do, the fact that there is no monument, monumentation, and George gave three options, I think there were.
Can we waive that, George?
Well, so I guess let me clarify, if you look at the survey plan included, not just the existing-
Mr. Planner, just, just hold tight for a second. Let, let us do the discussion, and we'll get to, and you'll have your chance to.
Sure.
Yeah, I think that any, any item is waverable in terms of submissions.
Even though, so we have a section that says waverable.
Is that survey?
It's not in there.
Yeah, I think you're right, that, so that is not waverable.
I would recommend not waiving it, but just allowing it to happen as they suggest.
And have it be a precondition.
Yeah.
Of approval.
Okay.
That's kind of where I'm falling on it to.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess I don't know which corner pins are missing. From my reading of the survey, all the pins are there. There's one area where the fence, and there's a fence and a stone wall, and I've spoken with the surveyor, and he used some fancy word, but the way that he chose, he chose the more conservative of the two lines, and he ran with the fence line rather than the stone wall.
Yeah, I think, I think the question is not, not that one, that's a-
So where that pin is, but otherwise, I think all the, all the surveys, they call out a pin, or a rod, or an iron, or something on all of those.
On the new, when you subdivide the parcel, I think that's the question. Are the, and Mr. Thebars can correct me if I'm wrong, but the, have you pinned the corners of the proposed lot?
The proposed, no, this is, Julia, you, you picked this up in your review. I believe it's the corners of the existing parcel.
Yeah.
Is being proposed for a subdivision, and those become reference points.
Yeah.
For everything that happens within the subdivision.
Right.
And is it, is it not monumented because of those questionable title areas?
And, and whether or not, yeah, yeah, so again, the surveyor said that these went back to like the early nineteen hundreds, these property lines. And so he used some old word that said, if you appealed this all the way to the main supreme, whatever, the main court, those are the lines that they, he's like, I'm very confident these are the lines that they come back at and say, yep, is our best understanding of how you read, read the deeds and how he interpreted them. So he has to put those flags in there saying, you know, nothing's one hundred percent there. He, he brought the lot, he made the lot as small. In, in the areas of discrepancy, he chose the inner lines. Like, the only thing that, if there was ever somebody to come and complain about it, the only way that it would go would be towards more land for subdivision rather than.
Okay.
See what I'm saying?
I do.
There would be more open space. If everybody ever, ever challenged that property line, they'd be challenging it to give us more land, which.
And so at the end of the day, what you're asking to be part of this project
Yeah.
is already pinned and, and per the dark line on the, on the map.
Sure, yep.
And the issue in-
There's a corner, there's one corner, I think it's that bottom left one, or the middle left, that there's not a surveyed pin. It's, it's the, the two fence lines where they tie in, and he's saying.
I, you know, what I would suggest is that, that pin be put in.
Sure, when this goes.
When this is approved, and you put all the pins in.
They'll repin everything.
They'll put that corner.
So, so before he draws, they draw a building permit, at what point, I guess, do we want to do it as to the board? Do we want to do it approved, approved at preliminary, final? Well, what would you plan to put it?
I'd say he'd pin that, he'd probably pin the centerline of the road and all the corner lots, and he might as well do all those at the same time, right off the start.
Once all the approvals are given.
Once it's approved, that'd be the first thing you'd do.
That'd be the first thing, that'd be the first thing.
Okay, and make that a condition?
Typically a final plan implementation condition. The monumentation of all of the individual lots.
Has to be done.
Typically done as a condition of final approval.
Okay. I turn to others on your thoughts on that.
And I, I'm quite sure that is a requirement, because I know on other subdivisions, some of the, it had to be pinned prior to issuing a permit. So i- if, if the building inspector is issuing a permit, he has to confirm that that has been accomplished.
But we're talking about two different things here, we're talking about-
It sounds like it. We're talking, we're talking individual lots versus total lot. They're asking for the approval to do the corner monumentation, which is different, at the same time that they do the other individual lot.
Right, I understand that, but obviously the, the separate properties are going to be marked later, that's definite.
And we're saying that any points that aren't very clearly marked will be done.
Yeah, what it is, is that-
I hear it.
The, the points around the perimeter
Yeah.
have to be marked right now as a condition of approval. You know, that's in the zoning. But we're, I think we're suggesting that we can make that a condition of approval, that it get done when they pin everything else.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, it sounds like there's some there, it's just in the ordinance, we just have to remember what we're doing here. We can't waive this, it says.
We're not waiving.
We're not waiving, waiving would mean we're not going to have to do it.
So, so this is talking about completeness review, right? This isn't talking about project review. So this is like what needs to be done to call it complete. So that's the waiver. What we're saying is we are waiving it for completeness review, we're not waiving it for project review. And I'm, I don't-
Well, no, I guess waiving would say you don't have to.
Can you hold on, can you hold on? I'm not saying like, it's that big of a deal, it sounds like there's a lot of monuments out there, but I'm just saying, that's what we're saying here. So we have to remember what we're doing, and maybe we need to make a change to this at some point, if it doesn't make sense to have it this early on.
So we need a waiver for the completeness of the application.
That's what these waivers are for.
And a precondition for the monuments to be set prior to final approval. Does that sound right?
No, I, I don't think we can waive this. I think it's more like, I don't even know what we're going to say, that it's a precondition, but don't mention waiver, because it doesn't list that we can waive this.
Correct.
So we have to use another word besides waive.
Precondition of approval? I mean, based upon your many years of experience?
I think you can do it as a, as a preliminary, you can make a decision on the completeness, that that will be a preliminary approval condition.
Right.
I think you can do that.
Okay, so that's B, barring any other discussion.
Yeah, and, and on this, the specific part in the zoning ordinance says that, you know, find it complete, there needs to be a standard boundary survey of the parcel, given complete description, descriptive data by bearings and distance, made by survey, professional land surveyor, which all of that's been done. And it does go on to say, the corners of the parcel shall be located on the ground, which has also been done, and marked by monuments. So it's, we're just saying that one area is not yet marked by a monument, and we're going to allow that to happen after.
Like you're saying, they have submitted a survey plan, meeting the requirements of the ordinance, but it is not, it doesn't meet the standard. So you can determine completeness, and then when you get to the substantive review, you could deny the subdivision on the basis that those monuments are not there, and they're required by the ordinance. So again, this is just to say, is there enough information for the board to make a substantive review of this project?
True. Okay, so we're, that is number B, or letter B, and then any other discussion?
I have one thing, sorry, on the clearing limits. So I think, George, you said that they were on here, is that right?
That is the applicant's response on the issue of the vegetative cover of the property not being showed in the subdivision plan.
So I see the, in the legend for approximate edge of tree line is the squiggle line.
I think that was for the surveyor, I think I replaced that with an actual picture of, now see the tree line.
Okay, so you're just saying that what's on the aerial, like you're just saying, see the trees, the trees are there?
Yeah, I guess, I guess the complaint was that you couldn't see what was the existing tree line. I guess that's part of the, the ordinance, that you show existing vegetation.
Yeah, what does it say regarding that? Sorry, I just wanted to get a quick.
Six point seven, point C, point one three.
Thirteen?
Thirteen, yep.
Vegetative cover type.
No. Oh, I see, okay. Number of acres within the proposed subdivision location of property lines, existing buildings, veg, cover type, okay. There wasn't anything about showing clearing?
No, I did the clearing, I mean, that orange hatch up there shows you the clearing.
Yeah, okay.
Putting orange.
Okay, then I guess that's, I'm okay with that. We might just want to, next time, just remove, we're not showing the edge of tree line.
Yeah.
In the legend.
Yeah, right.
So on the, the six, seven, C four, is the, the issue that happened on the site, is that a potential encumbrance?
That's what Ian indicated at the first completeness review.
Is that being completely resolved, it is not a potential encumbrance?
I talked, spoke with the town manager, and he indicated that the Select Board has received a payment from the property owner of the fine ordered by the court. The site has been substantially cleared to the point where the town's Select Board is satisfied with it. So it's been resolved as far as the Select Board is concerned, but typically what happens with these things is it then goes back to the court, and both parties come in and basically get a summary judgment that this is over. That was what Ian was saying needs to be part of their documentation.
And so, Mr. Applicant, do you know, last time, that had not been, or had not been recorded?
My understanding, and you might be able to correct me, is that Dean-
And you're about to bring whoever's talking in.
You want, you want, or Max, one of you guys?
Don't be shy.
Dean had sat down with the manager and signed.
Came in, gave payment, signed a piece of paper, sent payment, that it was fulfilled.
Okay.
Town manager has it on record.
Now, we agree with that part. The question, I think, is, have, have you gone back? There's, there is a legal document in the county courthouse.
It was supposed to get filed, is what the town manager told the landowner now.
So I see the, um, in the legend for approximate edge of tree line is the squiggle line.
I think that was for the surveyor, I think I replaced that with an actual picture of, now see the tree line.
Okay, so you're just saying that what's on the aerial.
Mm-hmm.
Like you're just saying, see the trees, the trees are there.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the complaint was that you couldn't see what was the existing tree line. I guess that's part of the the ordinance, that you show existing vegetation.
Yeah, what does it say regarding that, sorry, I just wanted to get it quick, um. What number is it, I'm sorry?
Um, six point seven, point C, point one three.
Thirteen?
Thirteen, yep.
Vegetative cover type type.
No. Oh, I see, okay. Number of acres within the proposed subdivision location of property lines, existing buildings, veg, cover type, okay. There wasn't anything about showing clearing.
No, I did the clearing, I mean, that orange hatch up there shows you the clearing.
Yeah, okay.
Putting orange.
Okay, then I guess that's, I'm okay with that. You might just want to, next time, just remove, we're not showing the edge of tree line.
Yeah.
In the legend.
Yeah, right.
So on the the six, seven, C four, is, uh, the the issue that happened on the site, is that a potential encumbrance?
That's what Ann indicated at the first completeness review.
Was that being completely resolved, it is not a potential encumbrance?
I talked, spoke with the town manager, and he indicated that the select board has received a payment from the property owner uh, of the fine ordered by the court. The site has been substantially re, uh, cleared to the point where the town's select board is satisfied with it. So it's been resolved as far as the select board is concerned, but typically what happens with these things is it then goes back to the court, and both parties come in and basically get a summary judgment that this is over. That was what Ann was saying needs to be part of their documentation.
And so, Mr. Advocate, do you know last time that had not been, or had not been recorded?
My understanding, and you might be able to correct me, is that Dean.
And you're about to bring whoever's talking in.
You want, you want, or Max, one of you guys?
Don't be shy.
Dean had sat down with the manager and signed.
Came in, gave payment, signed a piece of paper, sent the payment, that it was fulfilled.
Okay.
Town manager has it on record.
Now, we agree with that part, the question, I think, is, have have you gone back, there's, there is a legal document in the county courthouse.
It was supposed to get filed, is what the town manager told the landowner now.
Okay.
I don't know that's.
No, no one is.
Well, the question is, is it the town manager that does this, or the lawyers for the two, for the people involved in the lawsuit?
Yeah, right.
Generally goes, if you, town manager just signs something, in my opinion, that goes to the judge that says, you know, work is clean, it's been done, and the judge just says, I don't know what the right term, summary judgment, and that has to, because somewhere on your title, I think is the issue here, is there is an encumbrance that says you, you, you can't do anything.
I know it came in before they could take the payment, there's a piece of paper that the manager signed, the current landowner signed, and not a hundred percent sure if it can be otherwise or not, but then they were supposed to file it.
I couldn't find the original one.
I know it also took two or three months to deposit the check, so the piece of paper is probably.
Who's that, the preliminary?
Okay, what does the ordinance require?
The ordinance doesn't specify anything on this other than that they are required to to reveal any easements or other encumbrances.
Which they've revealed, and.
Except if this is an encumbrance, they have not revealed this encumbrance.
Yeah, well, it specifically says a copy of the most recently recorded deed of the parcel, which is done, a copy of all deed restrictions, easements, rightaways, or other encumbrances currently affecting the property.
And can I chime in?
You may.
I'm I'm remembering back now that I did a deed search for the property in general, I don't think any original uh, filings were ever made. So as far as like going back and changing the filing, I don't think they ever recorded the original.
They never filed.
So there's no, I guess what you're saying is there's no encumbrance.
There's no title, yeah, the title search has been clean, and I included the clean title search with my application, so I, besides the title.
So it's kind of hard to get an encumbrance removed if there was never an encum, I'm asking.
It's never recorded.
So it'd have to be like a, a lien put against the deed.
Sure, and and our, we have the title search, which came back clean, so I I don't know what else to.
And is the title search as of whatever, like?
It was after the payment was received.
But does it take that, it takes a little time, right?
That's what I'm saying, so if it's never been recorded, there's still no.
It would, if it was done earlier, it would be even more damaging, it's that it, it would be a lien on it.
If the judgment was filed to payment was over ninety days.
Okay, hold on a second, he was.
Yeah, I was just going to point out that Charlie, you did include in your supplement a title search, I'm assuming, that's what that is? And does that anyway address this, and and I think you're connecting that with what you're saying tonight, is there's title attorneys looked at it, and there is no encumbrance, is that what your position is?
Right, right. That's what I'm.
Hold on, can I just clarify, did you look at the title, or did you have a lawyer?
A lawyer looked at the title, I did my own search, just trying to find it using the understalking deeds, but actual lawyer did a title search.
Can you, can you, can you give us that?
I think.
Well, we have the title search, right?
It's in your packet, it's in the supplemental.
I think I gave you the title search.
Okay.
Which, uh.
But a lawyer looked at that?
The lawyer did that.
Okay, the lawyer did that, not you.
The lawyer made that. No, I did a separate one just out of my own curiosity, and I couldn't find any.
Okay, so it's in this packet?
Yep.
Okay. I see.
It's in this completeness packet. Who was that, who was the lawyer?
Why isn't it?
No, no, it's the title, title company has that done by a lawyer, lawyer reviews the.
Well, what would be the title on the page?
First American Title Insurance Company? No.
Yeah, should have been, if that was, that was, sounds like a title company.
All right. Sounds all right.
What, uh, what appendix is that, or annex, or, here we go, John, right here.
Did you date on that?
I don't know, I don't know if I'm looking at the right thing here.
Oh, okay.
It's the only thing in the packet.
Page twenty-two of thirty-one in the company.
When and date was June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, there's no weans recorded.
So there never was an encumbrance on that particular issue?
Not that I can find.
And the issue was, was resolved to the satisfaction of the town, because we were the ones who went after them. So the, the, um, issues on the title that I see are now standing mortgage, which everybody had, or may have, then rights and easements granted by DeWitt into Central Maine.
It's on the web, part one.
What's that?
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to find where you're at.
Um.
Oh, I see.
Let me see if I can find that, page number to that, page will unfortunately, schedule B, part two, if you're looking for the top of it. So those, let me go back a page, make sure I didn't miss anything, real estate taxes, that's all kind of. So if there was something recorded against the property, it would be on schedule B, part two, exceptions continued, and I don't see anything there. So as best I can tell, there was no encumbrance in the legal term of put on the, on the, uh, on the board.
That's my understanding as well.
Yeah, because this would have been filed in, was it like March?
That's what I would have thought.
But no, I'm, I, when was it, it would have been filed, I don't know.
The original? I don't know, it was before I was involved.
Oh, okay.
The board select stuff.
My thought on that one is that's, there is no, looks to be no official, uh, encumbrance, and the issue was resolved to the satisfaction of the town. I'm looking around to see if there's any disagreement.
No, I'm following on it as well.
Be different if we didn't, the town had it agreed, so. And I think when Ann brought that up, the last meeting, an assumption was made that there wasn't in fact a, a encumbrance, and something had, had been recorded against the property.
So are we ready to determine if it's complete or not?
I think we are, if somebody wants to make a motion that it is complete or not complete.
How do we make a motion when we find it complete?
Okay.
Oh, sorry, 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 what did you think of this? So I, I thought I had seen it, sorry, guys, look at twenty-two, um, C twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
So it does say showing clearing of veg. Um.
What do you mean, C, C twenty-two?
Sorry, so in the ordinance, under the preliminary plan, C twenty-two, C.
Six, seven, C twenty-two.
I think, I don't have it right in front of me, do we have the aerial that supposedly shows all this?
The location of any open space to be preserved or common areas to be created, in a general description of proposed owners with approvals and management.
I don't know.
That's C.
Are you talking about twenty-three?
Twenty-two.
The area of each lot where existing forest cover will be permitted?
Sorry, mine says twenty-two.
Okay, so that, I think, is shown on that plan up there in green, correct? Those are the parts of the lots that are to be cleared.
Mm-hmm.
And developed.
Okay, so.
So Wes, I think Wes had asked last time that it, just for like, uh, reference, what does twenty thousand square feet of clearing look like on each lot? And I had mentioned in the last meeting that none of those are, I think, over eighteen thousand, and they all show very buildable lots. And you're asking, I think what you're trying to get at is you want to see the existing conditions, tree lines underneath that.
Showing the tree.
But I don't think that's necessarily required, but it, I could see how you, I mean, you have your map.
Before we get into a long discussion about it.
Yeah.
Do we have a cop, I don't have it right in front of me, George, do we have a copy of the aerial that you referenced in your comments?
It's right here, but remind me, we just talked about it, there is no tree line. So it says it in the legend, but there's no tree line, he's saying that you can see the trees on the aerial, which you can. But what I'm, what I'm seeing, number twenty-three asks for where are, which of these trees are cleared? So we know from there, the lots that are being cleared, the green, but what else is being cleared, like the road, obviously, what else?
Well, the trick, the twenty-three specifically says the area on each lot where existing forest cover will be permitted to be removed and converted to lawn structures or other cover in any proposed structure.
So it's per lot? Okay, so that's it?
So that, that is what.
So I rest.
That means twenty-three, yeah.
Yeah, no, you're right, so I forgot, I didn't see that part.
Okay.
For each lot, okay.
So, uh, we have a motion, I believe.
Yep.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ron that is complete, a second by Wes that it is complete, with the requirement that they have to, I can, whatever we want to call it, that we will.
Just a note that the monumentation will be done as part of the conditions of approval for this, the additional monumentation of the corners.
Okay, so that's.
Did you write that down, George?
It's complete, and that there is a can, a note that says the additional monumentation will be done. At what, and I must stick at what level would, but before they get a building permit, before?
Will that be decided during.
We'll do that the final approval.
Okay. Yeah, we'll just make a note that we won't forget that. Okay, I have a motion, a second on that with a note, and all in favor, please raise your right hand. It looks at passes five, zero. So we have accepted completion. All right, and so the next thing on the agenda is, um, the public hearing. And so I've asked Mr., uh, the planner to go over the rules, if you will, on public hearings, so.
Yes, John, and, you know, obviously, since I've been helping the planning board, we're kind of implementing some new procedures and trying to systematize things for better organization and efficiency, so. Uh, what I did was I went to the bylaws, which were adopted, uh, most recently back in two thousand and six, and looked through there for the procedures for conducting a public hearing, and in your, uh, notes, I just simply reiterated what I consider to be the key points of that. The first one being is that it is, uh, we have posted and advertised for this public hearing tonight, as required by the bylaws, uh, and that the chairman basically presides over the public hearing, and, uh, he has the authority to make a determination whether any testimony is considered irrelevant to the application being reviewed by the planning board. Uh, and, uh, that decision by the chairman, uh, can be challenged by any board member making a motion to have have certain testimony that the, the chairman deems irrelevant actually admitted into the record, and the, the board would vote on that. But otherwise, the planning board chairman has the authority to determine that testimony being given is irrelevant to the consideration of the application. He also has authority to set time limits, reasonable time limits. Uh, and under the bylaws, there is, uh, language about opportunity of every party to rebut testimony that's given. So I think the intent of that is to say that the applicant should be given an opportunity after public comment has been submitted to to respond to that public comment, uh, with information that addresses it, either rebutting that it's not accurate, or asking the board, uh, making an argument that it is. So they have an opportunity to rebut it, and then theoretically, a, a, a member of the public would have an opportunity to rebut that information. And obviously, you could get going back and forth, back and forth, and the idea, I think, and what I discussed with John, was just to keep it organized and and streamlined, and get through this in a reasonable timeframe, uh, to simply give the applicant an opportunity to respond to the public testimony, and then give any member of the public who wants to respond to that one opportunity to rebut, and then that would be the, the end of it. So I've suggested procedurally that the, uh, public be given opportunity to give testimony and submit evidence, and then the applicant be permitted to respond to that information that's provided to the board, and then give, uh, members of the public that spoke an opportunity, one, uh, opportunity to rebut whatever the response of the applicant is. Then close the public hearing and move to the substantive deliberations by the planning board, and during those substantive deliberations, after the public hearing is closed, the planning board can ask questions of members of the public who did speak, uh, or the, and or the applicant. So it doesn't stop the board from getting more information, once you've closed the public hearing. Um, the intent is to focus on whether the application complies with the standards of the ordinance and the requirements, uh, and it's not to debate town growth management policies, which are set at the town meeting. The planning board is required by law to follow the ordinance, whether it agrees with them or not. Um, and these are all put in place to ensure that everyone has their due process rights, uh, protected, and to be able to support any decisions that are made by the board, and also to meet the statutory deadlines for review and decision, because as of your determination of completeness tonight, you have sixty calendar days to render a decision on the preliminary plan application. So part of the reasons for limiting the public hearing, public input comment in the way that's prescribed in the bylaws, is to ensure that the board is able to meet those statutory deadlines. Finney.
There is, um, when people, the public speaks, is it, does people have to introduce themselves, or kind of say their, for the record,
Yeah.
uh, their name and and address?
And I did neglect to meet, uh, there is in the ordinance, uh, a definition of what an aggrieved party is, and any member of the public can speak, but the ordinance makes a distinction between a general member of the public and an aggrieved party, and under the, the land use ordinance, an aggrieved party is someone who suffered, suffers a particularized injury by either approval or denial of the subdivision. So theoretically, the butters could be directly affected by this, or someone could make a case that they are an aggrieved party, because they would suffer a particular. The fact that it affects everybody in town the same, uh, is not a, uh, indicator of an, of an aggrieved party.
Any other comments on that? No, I will just summarize my thoughts on what George said, so we'll start with questions, comments by the public. The applicant, if he returns, will, uh, get a chance to reply to those, and then the public will get a chance to reply to the applicant's reply. We will then shut off the public hearing, and that'll be it from, uh, the public, and it will turn it over to the board. At the same time, during the public hearing, it is for, um, the public's inputs, I'd ask the board to, let's hold our thoughts and comments until we get into the board discussion, and for everybody, any questions or comments are directed to me and not the applicant, not to a particular member of the board or or otherwise, and then I will, uh, ask the applicant or a particular board member or Mr. Thebars to to do it, so direct your questions to me, and I will direct them to the appropriate responder. And other than that, I think.
And determine relevance.
And determine relevance, well, I won't direct it if I think it's irrelevant, so. And again, it's about this project, so, and in this project in particular, not town policies or whatever it may be, so. Is your guy re returning?
Yes.
Okay.
Almost there.
Now, almost there, please get in here.
Yes, sir.
Well, he shouldn't be.
I was gonna let them have the.
Yeah.
Yeah, he, they're, he's gonna respond, so, it's, it's the public's opportunity.
Oh, I understand that, but we don't want him to hear the question?
Uh, he's just, he's there, he's there.
Okay, so who, I guess we're at the public, and please, they said name, address, and, and, uh.
My name is Alan Irish, I.
Uh, so would you step to the microphone, please?
Just slide to the table, it'd be great. Please tell me if I'm out of line in any way, I want to follow the protocol.
I'm kind of shy, so I'm like.
I ain't no.
And it's Mr. Iverson?
No, Irish, I R I S H.
I can spell that, okay.
Alan, two L's and an E. I'm a, a resident of the Timber Oak Association, I'm, and I will be talking, representing the association, I hope. I'm the president of the association.
Okay.
Don't ask me why, but I am. Um, so I've got basically three questions, um. Most of them are relative to, you can communicate this to, to the developers. One is, I've spent twenty-three years out there, and I have walked those woods more than anybody alive, probably ten thousand hours in those twenty-two years, I know what's back there, okay? Um, the two monuments in question that affect Timber Oak are at the corner, the northeast corner of our property along Route nine. The monument marking the common land, the fifty-foot common land in is missing. Every other monument, and these were done by a surveyor in Bodenham, Brian Smith, in nineteen eighty-seven, not somebody two hundred years ago, okay? Um, the monuments have been capped by Brian Smith, for the most part, you can check them yourself. Um, I know where every one is, and they're all present along that line, all the way to the back of our common land, except for the one on the road. The other one in question, um, is on the southwest corner. It's. It's, um, and I worked for Surveyor when I was in high school, but my wife and I went out there and did a, uh, and I will admit that the line follows a set of granite posts that we used to separate fields, that are straight as a laser, all the way from John Peeler's house, right out back, and the back southwest pin is in a tree. I swear to God, it's in a tree, and you can go back and look at the, the history of the development of Timber Oak, and Brian Smith names this tree, and it's still there. It's an old white pine, or hemlock, it's probably this big, it's now this big. It's in there, it's, it's red, and it is in disagreement with the monument that's there presently, by about two feet this way, and about this, and for Surveyor, that's a lot. I would expect it to be within an inch, you know? I mean, back when I was using tapes and level rods and everything else, and, you know, I, I surveyed all the land down in Phippsburg around the basin, we were a mile away, if we were more than an inch away from a pin buried in tar, we had to redo it. So there's something back there. Um, and I know you were talking about monuments, and I know this is probably not going to be a contestable issue with us, but if it's gonna be surveyed again, let's do it right, okay? The other thing, I wanna know which, how the numbering goes on those, on those homes. I could find, if it was in the small print, I couldn't read it even with a magnifying glass. So which is number one, which is number two, which is number three, because there are a couple of lots in question with respect to wetland. Um, and the third is we are willing, as an association, if the developers are running into trouble with the DOT in terms of lining up exactly with Patriot Way, to provide egress across the common land, those fifty feet, not beyond that, because it belongs to Teddy Kelly.
I, 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 I'm sorry, I don't mean to be mean.
And I am sorry.
Please direct it to me, and, that's okay.
We are willing, as an association, to talk with the developers and negotiate so that they can line up Patriot Drive, straight across and not diagonally, as is, Charlie and I had talked about this before, um, as a possib-, as a possibility, and I want, I want the developers to know that as an association, we are willing to negotiate with that in good faith. We really want this development back there, we just want it done right. Okay? That's all I have.
Okay.
I think we've got some other members of the association.
Oh, no, everybody gets a chance, yes.
Yeah, okay, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, I guess, while we're doing, the association that wants to speak? Please step to the mic.
All right. Yeah, Alan. Derek Simkowicz, twenty-three Timber Oak Drive.
Derek, how do you spell your last name?
So I have concerns, um, regarding the road and the drainage. Uh, we bought the property two years ago, uh, and since then, we've done a lot of work to push, uh, the standing water back off of the property. Uh, we've done a new leach field, uh, significant work to the property. Uh, and my understanding, talking with Charlie, is that he's given me, um, you know, he's, feels like he's addressed in his work. Uh, my concern is directly across that road is a new house being built, uh, by, I believe, one of the applicants. And I think there's a conflict there of, should this work be peer reviewed? If it comes down to, hey, whose yard is gonna be flooded, there's a conflict, you know, they're directly across that road from us, and my concern is, you know, we're gonna be dealing with draining, drainage issues that we've spent, you know, twenty thousand dollars to address. And so, I take it, you know, I take everyone at their word, I don't think that conflict is meant to be negative, but I'd like to see some level of peer review of some of this work, to give me a level of comfort that a year from now, we're not gonna have an issue on our property. I wanted to get that, uh, in the record.
Okay. Well, well, we will answer them as we, as we get there, so.
Okay.
You?
Can I just ask a, a process question, Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Really quickly. Are we, if we have a question about their comment, like what their-
Well, we'll do, we'll do that when we get to our, our part, where we have the opportunity to clarify any questions they have.
My name is David Ruzwell, I live at sixteen Timber Oak Drive, and I just have one question. Section six point three one requires the planning board to verify the timber harvesting. Was anything done, uh, in verifying the timber harvesting that occurred during, so, there within the past five years? I know there was timber harvesting done. I spoke to our zoning enforcement officer, when it was done, he said, oh, there's nothing we can do about it. That was his comment. They added grinders in there, and skidders in there, and I just wanna know if anything was ever account, any comment was ever checked on that.
Okay. Anybody else with the association? Anybody else not with the association that would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Heather Roy, I live at seven 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 Hollowell Road, um, and I have a comment and, uh, I have some process questions also. Where, we have the opportunity to speak right now about public comment, and so, part of like the completeness review, we don't get the chance to speak before that, but if, if we have, um, an issue with the completeness, we don't get that opportunity to say that before you vote on whether or not something is complete. So the reason why I'm asking the process question is that next you're gonna move into reviewing the criteria, and so if we have issues with some of the criteria, are we going to get the opportunity to speak on some of those issues before you vote, because perhaps we're gonna bring up something that you didn't think of?
No.
Okay, so if I have-
This is the opportunity.
Now's the opportunity to do that, okay? Um, I don't feel prepared to do that.
I'm sorry, I should've waited to answer no, but no.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, um, first my comment is that I would love for the board to consider in every decision that they're making, that you're the first and last line of defense for the town, and the rural character of the town. I'm not against this subdivision, um, like Mr. Irish was saying, I think it's just really important that, um, it's done well and correctly. Um, you know, you guys are the ones who make the decisions about what happens in the town, and what the, what the landscape of the town is gonna look like, and so, I'm asking that you just keep that in mind as you're making the decisions that you're making, especially, um, in terms of buffering. So that was one of the, um, things that I was gonna bring up, if now was the opportunity to speak about the criteria. When you get to the buffering portion of the subdivision, if you look at subdivisions that are already done, um, you know, there's setback off the road, I think the current ordinance says fifty feet, even though the comp plan ahead of that says a hundred feet setback, a hundred foot setback, right? So are you gonna make your decision based on the comp plan, or are you gonna make your decision based on the land use ordinance? If we're talking about a hundred foot setback, they don't have that. So, because they don't have that, and it's a straight shot in, um, for the people that are living along the side of that road, I think it's really important to consider buffering. I know that over on Ruby Lane, um, they put up a complete privacy fence going in, um, to protect the property along the side, and the gravel pit that they've done, they've planted abrevi di the whole way, um, and so in order to maintain the rural character, and I know they don't have, they don't have the buffer off Route Nine, um, but I do think to protect those properties around it, you really need to, um, maintain what the town voted on in the comp plan, and consider buffering in those decisions. Um, in terms of the, about the summary judgment, while we were sitting here, um, I very quickly went into the registry of deeds and found that a discharge has been recorded, in fact, in the registry of deeds. It was, um, written on the sixth of May, and it was recorded on the ninth of May. And so, with that being said, I think it's really important that this board does its due diligence in not taking an applicant at face value, and require, the way the ordinance says, that they provide proof. It wasn't hard for me to get that information, and Charlie said that he looked it up, I was able to find it while we're sitting here. So, I'm asking the board to please make sure that you have evidence of the things that you're requesting, and not just take the applicant at their word. Um, in terms of the survey, the tax map says that this lot is forty-one acres, I think, and the survey, and I don't know if this was addressed at the meeting, that's why I was asking if I missed a meeting in between, um, and if it was addressed, I apologize. The survey, I believe, is about fifty-three acres, um, which happens to be the tax map, plus the amount of acreage that the current landowner wishes to keep. I would like to reiterate the third-party review. We're missing landmarks, and that's a substantial amount of acreage found, and so, when you're addressing that part, which was part of the completeness part of it, that, um, you know, I was thinking while I was sitting here, I think it's important that the board, again, does its due diligence and requires third-party information, um, to make sure that these numbers and figures and whatnot are all accurate, because the tax map has been charging the landowners of this property for however long, on forty-one acres, and now they're coming to you and telling you that it's fifty-three. Um, what else? Oh, the survey. So, I live near this property, and this line right here, I have a survey of this property, um, that includes Seth's land, and the coordinates, and I'm not a professional about this whatsoever, I did try to find out, um, but, and what I understand is that when you're on a line, one part of the coordinate is the same, and then the other part changes. I know I'm not articulating this well at all, but what I'm trying to say is that Mr. Irish is right, this is a laser line, and there are granite stones to mark it. The numbers on this survey do not match the numbers on the survey for the property that exists right here. And so again, that's why I'm asking for that third-party review, um, because those numbers don't match. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
I think it does.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. I know I have more. I was hoping your answer was gonna be no to the substanti-, substantive part of it. Oh, this is one more thing. So, when the board's making the decisions that you're making, um, I would like for you to also please consider that it may not just be the applicant that's interested in appealing an application, that when you're making your decisions, that you're not only worried that the applicant might be the one appealing, but that aggrieved parties or other residents of the town may be the one appealing an application. And so, while you're making your decisions, just keep that in mind, that if I were to find something legally not binding, as we saw at town meeting, I don't have an issue bringing that up. And I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, Joe Roy, no relation to Heather, um, Pinkham Brook Road.
Just, one quick, you mention that every time you bring up your name.
Yeah, well, I always try, just so no one thinks that we're related, same thing at the town meeting.
I didn't know if there was something personal.
Yeah, no, I just don't wanna be associated with nobody. Um, so, I'm also on the Conservation Commission, um, so the vast majority of my comments are gonna be about, uh, the resource concerns that the Conservation Commission has. If I have a differing opinion than what the Conservation Commission is, I'll caveat that before I say it. Uh, just a little background on myself, not that anyone asked, but I'm a wildlife biologist, and I used to work as environmental consultant, so I've delineated several thousand miles of stream and thousands of wetlands, so it is, uh, comments from someone who has a lot of experience with this stuff. Um, so first off, someone, uh, I think David brought up the, David brought up the timber harvest, and, uh, you know, being able to request that some information is given either by the forest, uh, the master logger, certified professional logger, forester who was responsible for the plan prior, um, is something that the planning board can request. It sounds like from today's discussion that that wasn't requested, I would encourage the planning board to request that, um, just based off of the site walk that we all had the other, uh, couple months ago. I saw activities that are in violation of what, uh, forest operations are allowed to do. For example, if you put a culvert in a stream that, and you put, uh, dirt on top of it, or scrabble, that's considered a permanent pro, crossing, and you can't do that without filing for a permit. All permits are publicly available, and I went online and did a search to see if there was a permit filed, and there never was. So whatever was done there, that primary access, there's no record of a permit being issued for that road, so that's just an example why I think it's important to get that sort of information, uh, because you do have the authority to request it. The other thing is, there's a couple of skid trail crossings that align a little bit with the road that's going across, that are near areas that, um, have water percolating out of the ground, indicating that it's a minimum, uh, intermittent drainage, which would be a stream that's protected under the Forest Practice Act, and seeing as, in the town of Durham, we've adopted the statewide standards of the Forest Practice Act, uh, there is certain regulatory implications for impacting the bank or the bed of that. So I just think it's one of those things where since you have the opportunity to request that information, and knowing from the site walk that there were things that, on the face value, looked to not be, um, done properly, you should request that information. Uh, another thing I wanna talk about is, uh, the planning board, and this is the feeling of the Conservation Commission, the planning board has the opportunity to, uh, request a third-party review for all wetland delineations for subdivisions. Um, we would encourage the planning board to do that, um, based on the fact that the subdiv-, that the, uh, wetland delineation was conducted outside of the growing season. Without boring you with the details, in order to classify something as a wetland, you have to show, uh, proof of hydrology, proof of hydric soils, and proof of a hydrophytic vegetation community. It's hard to do that when the ground's frozen, and everything's dead, so, generally speaking, from my professional experience, when we would do delineations during January, February, March, November, December, anything, October through the winter, we would consider it a recon delineation, which where we'd, we'd say, we think that there's a wetland in this general vicinity, let's come back and ground proof it later. Um, or a lot of times, we would just say, we know that this area's very wet, we recommend against utilizing it. So, we would not recommend someone build in a footprint where the delineation was done outside of the growing season, 'cause it's just not really sound science in terms of, uh, accurately measuring the existing resources that are there. Uh, you know, especially because our winters are pretty harsh, sometimes it's not, sometimes you can shake out a dead fern and figure out whether it's a obligate wetland species, other times it's just mush, so. That was one of the major concerns of the Conservation Commission. Additionally, resource protection, so we know that the site has existing resource protection where the improper stream crossing is right now. Obviously, this is gonna go in, this is proposing a crossing in a different area, but we just wanna encourage the planning board to really make sure due diligence is done, um, when crossing resource protection. You know, resource protection does not allow for many of the things that would have to happen here without special permits. So, for example, um, backlot access, road access, lots and stuff like that have regulatory issues with the town if there's resource protection. And seeing as, this is a heavily impacted thing, this isn't, you know, putting in, uh, Woods Road and doing a cut and then leaving, this is something that's gonna get daily traffic for, in perpetuity, it is gonna be a s- pretty significant impact on resource protection, which we feel is a little bit outside of, um, what the design of resource protection is trying to accomplish. So we just would encourage the board to really get a lot of information before deciding that it's worth, um, impacting in the resource protection area. And then, the other thing too is, I don't know if it's on this plan, but one of the plans was showing, um, stormwater drainage and collection feature near, uh, within the resource protection area. You know, the, we, as a Conservation Commission, just think that that's not necessarily a very good practice. Um, you know, the stormwater is, that's being collected off of the site, it's gonna have any sort of chemicals and things like that, that people are applying to their lawns, it's gonna have the salt, and to deposit that, uh, in a area where we have resource protection, we think kind of, uh, is counter to resource protection and what is intended to do for our town. Um, you know, those resource protected areas are designed to be that last vegetative buffer to protect water quality as things are moving down towards the streams, and protect all of our other resources, so impacting that in a way where you just deliberately, you know, moving effluent off of the site, we don't think is a good, uh, good practice, and, you know, think that it's important to look at like precedent, and if we say, yeah, you know, we can resource, impact- know, we can resource, impact resource protection this time, you know, future developments might say, well, it's been done before in Durham, why not do it again? It doesn't seem to be an issue. To end on a positive note, the Conservation Commission thinks it's really great that the open space is associated with the open space of the parcel next to it. That's a really good way to build habitat connectivity, and we just think that that's a good step that developers can take when they want to, you know, try to maintain the rural characteristic of the town, and there's a lot of ecological benefits to that. My only other question was, when we were on the site, and this is a personal question now, not Conservation Commission, there was a bunch of equipment, looked like a gravel processor and stuff like that, and having that removed was a condition of the lien on the property. The select board had said it was removed, and then we went out and saw that it wasn't. Has that been removed? That's just something that I would say that the planning board should inquire upon. So those are all my comments.
Okay.
Happy to respond if anyone has any questions.
Okay, well, you'll get a chance to reply to the, either our answering it, or the applicant replying to it. So let's go back, and I appreciate this, and then, so Mr. Applicant, if you would like to reply to their comments, and I'll kind of steer you to those that apply to you versus, might be the staff or a plan commission question. So the first question from Mr. Allen was monuments, there were two locations, one, and I think it's a discrepancy, one monument was missing, I guess it boils down to the accuracy, and a couple of questions on the accuracy of your survey, and there was a monument along Route Nine that was not there, and a pin on it, on a tree that was a different monument than what your surveyor put in, so your comments on that.
He said about the pin, I don't know if he said it was different, he just said, that's what's there. So I don't know if that's what we assumed, or if that's, I don't know if, the way I understood his comment was that, I don't know if he was confirming that that pin is there, or he was saying, I think he was explaining that.
Hold on just a second. Mr. Allen, I got a question about your question. So there are two, you had two comments about the monument, the monuments, your first, I guess, combined question was, there's a monument missing along Route Nine, and you said that there was a monument stuck in a tree that, you may, please.
Oh, go on up, I'm not supposed to talk to you.
And he's not supposed to talk to you, so our reprimand hit him a second.
One, two, three, four, I don't know that, that was the other, so we're looking at, wait a minute, a little, okay. Not that smart, not that stupid either, let's see. Okay, so Timber Oak has, and these are all Brian Smith, nineteen eighty-six, Bodenham's, however surveyor he has been for years, he's still there. I don't know when it disappeared, but somewhere in the last five years, that pin disappeared along Route Nine, and it wasn't in the last year or before that. Where the hell, okay, so this is, so this, this pin, can't tell, this, this pin, this is, this is Kelly's property right here. So we have fifty feet, follows an old stone wall, follows lines of telephone poles, almost like a laser beam. There was an old stone wall, you can, you can find pieces over here and there. That pin is missing. So this fifty feet from here to that pin is what I was saying, that the association would agree to allow egress over that, so they can align that with Patriot, so you could get that exact perpendicular alignment that the DOT wants, and we're willing to work with you on that. We want this to work. The other one, though, that being a kind of a scientist myself.
Is it that all left, it's a southwest corner, you said, right?
Southwest.
Your finger was just on it.
Right here.
Yep.
Now nine hundred, what the hell, oh no, where's our land?
So this is, this is Seth, and this is John.
So where's the granite wall?
Right here.
Okay, so this is a laser, whoever did it, I mean, is biwire in it that can be dated back one day, it's the nineteen thirties? You told me one, you looked at the biwire, you could tell me how old it was. But they are laser straight, and most of them are still there. And so when you extend them out beyond, and you look in a straight line, I was looking for that back monument, I couldn't find it. So I came down here one day, a few years ago, and she's amazing, the time you had when you retired. And it was way before this development was in place, it was, it was, I got interested in it about five years ago.
Mr. Allen, in interest of, we've got a lot to cover tonight, so your question, your concern was?
Well, I think that the tree, which is still there, has got a nail buried in it with a red, it means something. Okay? Now, if I'm the tree, and I look down, and I can see those granite lines, and I can see, going back on your back line, where it's going, and I can see three and a half feet away from me, a little bit to the northeast, and a little bit to the, what the hell would that be?
Yeah.
Pin, with, you know, with the previous, or I don't know who owns it now, but boom, right there, and it's not in the right place. So if you take a nine hundred and fifteen-foot back line, you kind of, a triangle is, could be, what's the discrepancy?
I don't know what the difference is in.
Fifty acres, sixty acres?
Oh, the land.
Okay, I'm sorry, no, that's not, we're not going to do it that way, so, with your question, and I don't, I don't mean to, but I just want to make sure we understand your question.
Quick with numbers.
Okay, I understand, and, so the question is, is that one pin is missing in an area that you're willing to work with the applicant? The other question is, is that what you think should be a corner pin, and what they have recently pinned are different?
I don't think the association would ever contest that, but I'd like to get it right.
Okay.
Who was the surveyor, can I ask? Who was the surveyor?
Brian Smith.
Out of Bodenham?
Yep, let's, let's, let me call time now, so that, one, yeah, address it to me, and I think the question is that we need to resolve is, and ask the applicant if he can answer that tonight.
What's, what's the question?
I think the question is, which is the more accurate, or are you, do you need to go back and determine the accuracy of the pin in the tree versus the pin you put into the ground?
Right, and I guess I'd fall back on what, my, my only context or reference is, having spoken to our surveyor, his process and the way he determined what he felt that that was the law binding, and if they, people wanted to appeal it, and that's, then he's fine with that, but that's, that is his best assumption of where that line is. Now, from what I'm understanding, I think it's, it's consistent with what I said, that that's, we've assumed less land than he's saying there might be.
So if you use your line, it's the association, Timber Bend gets more land?
Yes, it's actually the butter over there to the left.
Okay, well, that answers.
Is it the opposite? I wonder if you use true north instead of compass.
Okay, I'm not sure we're going to be able to answer that tonight, sir, is the question, so. If you would just perhaps maybe give feedback on that particular question.
I'm actually.
Okay, the, the second question, Mr. Allen, that you had was on, you wanted to see something with big lot numbers on?
Well, there were two, there were two lots that were mentioned in, in the.
They're in the comments for the staff?
Put together, there were some question about wetland invasion and whatnot, I just wanted to know which two lots it were, and I didn't know how they were numbered, so I, I just wanted to know the sequence a little Charlie.
Yeah, I think, I think I could probably chime in, because there's only two lots that really have a lot of wetlands, and they're right in the corner of that, that turn here. I tweaked these lots since the last one to give them more space. There's some wetlands in here that I pulled this lot line further that way, and.
Would you, would you ask Charlie which, which one is number one and which other?
This is Lot Eleven, and this is Lot Twelve. And I moved, I moved Lot One all the way, I got, that is another change. Lot One was down here, and I pulled it all the way up and left that.
Would, would Charlie know if they're numbered one, two, three, thirteen essentially?
Kind of.
It's all the overall site plan.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay, and then the third, I guess, was more of a comment than a question, that you are willing to, the association's willing to work with the applicant and negotiate something that they might need, is that fair to say? Fifty, fifty feet?
We want it to work, and, and I hope I don't get shot by other people in the association for saying this, but I'm pretty sure that we'd be willing to talk about. In exchange for perhaps some noise and light buffering along that border that, that Heather mentioned, that would be duly appreciated, you know, since the line, the actual ditch of the road is the property line. It's just ten feet wide, the road's twenty-five, another ten feet, so if we could negotiate with them on that in good faith, in exchange for that, that would be kind of a quick.
Okay, all right, and I leave that, we're, when we're finished with all the public hearing and questions, we'll have our own requirements for that, for them to do that, and you mentioned, is there going to be a requirement to align better with Patriot Way? We'll know that better as we go through the process, and should the board say, you've got to align it better, he has someone that he can talk to about doing that, and, and negotiate the, the whatever.
Yeah, we've actually spoken with Peggy.
Okay, we're good, we're good.
I can't respond to that.
No, I mean, you're willing to negotiate, right?
I just wanted to further respond to the comment about the easement.
Okay.
That the other butter directly up the road has also agreed to give us an easement, further allowing us to drain that area, which is, I guess, in, in.
Okay, now we're getting in, into a discussion, you're bringing, let's.
Well, I think it is.
Would you, would you inform the developer that the association has bilaws that are very strict about what homeowners do in terms of changing that property line?
Okay, and so that's, that's fair, and we'll get the opportunity to, to clarify questions as we're going there, but let's just kind of stick to the, the question at hand, not a property that wasn't, wasn't.
The question is, can that be realigned, or something you can do, is I think what Charlie was trying to say, it kind of has bearing on that.
And we'll, yeah, we'll get into that in a bit, we're going, I mean, when we have it, whether we need to realign it and all that stuff, so. Okay, so that's the HOA in general. Mr. Simples, did I get your name correct? I'm sorry. Derek, did I get, did I get that part of it? Your question was, you were, you were concerned about drainage coming from the new subdivision onto your property and flooding that, and you asked us to do a peer review?
Correct.
So I will take this opportunity to address peer reviews. We will discuss the need, it is part of the, getting to the preliminary plan approval, we will discuss the need to do peer reviews, and so we take your comments concerning about, about drainage, alignment with the state highway, and, or, excuse me, Patriots Way and all that stuff, so we will, we'll get to that before we get to preliminary approval. And there's several of you, wetlands, and there are other issues that brought that up, so that's for discussion as we go through this.
So were there any questions? Because when I was speaking, there seemed like there were.
Yeah, we'll get, when we get to that point, we'll get to the opportunity for you, the board, to ask you questions about whether it be that or other things.
Can I reiterate my question, so everything is covered, you, I think you got it the spirit of it, but I think there is a conflict, because one of the developers is on the other side of that road, and, you know, when the, when the work is done, push comes to shove, you know, I would like to have someone kind of representing our side of it, because.
And that's the purpose of the peer review. I mean, I understand what you're saying.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, just process here. So we're asking all these questions, and the applicant's answering, but the board, we're going to come back again and ask the.
If you have further questions on a particular thing.
But just clarification, we want to do it that way versus, okay.
Okay, so next person, next drainage peer review, Mr. Griswold, you had a question about timber harvesting, and whether it has been done, and in general, there were a couple of questions about things that had been done by the, what is now the landowner, but the not owner, so if somebody violated, if the gentleman who, and Mr. Tebar can correct me if I'm wrong, but somebody owns that land now, who is different than the developer. So the damage that was done, whether the culvert was put in improperly or whatever, is not of a bearing on this particular project, and you'll get a chance to reply to my reply. Does that make sense? So when, if they harvested illegally, we'll get to the, we'll get to that, and a forester review is also something that we're going to discuss here on the road, but I think we're, fair to say that we would like some indication or formal sign-off from a licensed forester, state forester, whatever it is that says.
I believe I included that.
Okay. No, we'll talk about that, whether it's acceptable or not. Okay, so we are going to bring that up in our discussions, is I guess what I'm saying here, and everybody will get a chance to weigh in on it. Okay, so that covers Mr. Griswold. And Ms. Roy, general discussion about completeness, for those of you who may not have been here last month, remember, what the first vote we took today was whether something had been submitted. So whether the site plan had been submitted, they paid their applications, they had all the things, there's soils reports and all that stuff, during the substantive discussion which follows the public hearing, we will get the opportunity to decide whether what they submitted was, was wrong or not acceptable. So that is still to come. Completeness is simply that they, they gave us, required a site plan, and they gave us a site plan, required a survey, they gave us, and that's what we're doing, last meeting and this meeting.
One clarification, you said that.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm going to really follow the rules. Do you get a chance to reply, you get a point, a chance to reply to my reply?
It's not a comment on.
You get a chance, you'll have a chance to ask that question after this.
Robert Tools, you can make a point of clarification.
Public conference closed right now.
Yeah, it is right now, we're, we're going through the questions, you'll get a chance to.
When was it closed?
The public hearing hasn't been closed, but I'll go one more time. It was the public, we're going to talk to the, or going to try to answer your questions as best we can. If you don't like the answer from anybody, you get a chance to reply to that reply, and make a clarification, and make a clarification. The public input at this point, we're not taking it, all right?
It's not a public input, it's asking questions to clarify.
From the public, we're not taking it right now.
Yeah, the answer is no at this point. You'll get a chance to ask for a clarification, okay? You'll get a chance to come back up and, and ask that.
But it's not a comment on.
I understand that, okay, it's not your turn to talk, I don't know any other way to say it, I'm trying not to be grumpy about it, but it's not your turn to talk, and you'll get a chance, you get another turn to talk, okay? So I want to do this as friendly as possible, but we kind of set the rules out at the beginning. So it, right now, we're, we're not taking that second phase. So that is, the, the completeness thing, the vote was that it is in fact completeness. I note your comments, and I think that everybody on the board shares your desire to make sure that what is approved is, is good, and that our standard is what's in the ordinance. So the question about whether we follow the comp plan or the ordinance, our requirement is to follow the ordinance. So what applies on the ordinance? Okay, a buffer along Route Nine, the question is fifty versus a hundred, but, you know, we're starting, now, that's not to say that we won't ask for something, but the question about whether or not we follow ordinance, or, or whatever. So we certainly can negotiate or say there's a particular interest, but the, the minimum standard, if you will, that we are required to enforce is the ordinance. I don't think, whether on the title issue, I don't think we took the applicant at face value, it, we looked at a title, which is a legal review of what was in there, and that the information that came up was not there, so we didn't trust him, he provided a title search that it wasn't there, so if it was submitted after that title search, or whatever it may be, so we didn't take him at face value, is what I'm trying to say on that. We discussed whether, fifty-three versus forty-one, we will take a look at that in our, our peer review, and Charlie, maybe you can address that now?
Yeah, I don't ever put any weight into tax maps. My property, new law is off by half, and it's just.
Okay.
I can't, I, best I can do is go with what the surveyor told me.
The certified, the survey, okay? Peer review, we talked about completeness, the survey we discussed, and as to who can appeal, I'm going to turn to Mr. Tebar to say, who can appeal a decision?
An aggrieved party.
An aggrieved party. So you have, then there's a definition on what the aggrieved party is. I mean, you can always appeal, whether it's accepted by the Board of Appeals or not, if, is whether or not they, they determine that you didn't like the planning board's decision, and whether they consider you an aggrieved party. Fair response? Okay, Mr. Roy, let me see if I've got these. To your question that you've provided the information, I think, as we get into the discussion, you gave a forester's name and his license number. We'd probably like him to tell us, you know, in an official letter or something.
Foresters are tough to get anything out of.
Yeah, work harder. So there, there were a lot of comments, Mr. Roy, that you had on what damage may or may not have been done by the previous owner and that whether they violated with culverts and other things doesn't impact what the, we're going to require these folks to do. So now if they did some damage, that's got to be done, you know, legally fixing wetlands or whatever it may be, that's, that's a whole different issue. Does that make sense?
Well, it's not correct, but I understand what you're saying.
You get a chance to reply to my reply? Okay, we'll take a look at the resource protection and retention pond next to it as part of our substantive discussion. And do you have anything to say about that, Mr. Burnham?
I've been doing this for twelve years and, I mean, the reason it's near resource protection zones is because resource protection zones are located in the low spot, low spots where water drains too. So in order to catch and treat the most amount of water and keep runoff from the road entering the stream untreated, you want to get that pond as close to that low point as possible.
Could you describe briefly what treatment is? Catches one thing.
Undrained soil filter that collects and filters out phosphorus and salt and all these things that sit there and.
Okay, so you're treating the water before it's really.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, not to say that it's approved, but.
Yeah, the part that won't be treated is the existing part, that's, that's existing now, coming in, that we're, that we'll be paving.
Okay. And we'll talk about that in details of the plans and then clean up. So I think I covered the question, any of the planning board members think I missed a question before we let the public come back and reply to many of my replies or others?
So what about our, when do you want us to?
After, after they, after they, after the public gets their second shot.
Gotcha.
So we'll, we can go, I'll go back through the list. And those who have already spoken, Mr. Irish, you are the first. Did you have any follow-up replies to the replies?
Well, I'd like you to know that we want to work with the developers. We think that, we hope that they'll do a good, honest job recognizing that it's a neighborhood that we live in and that we want to provide them egress if the DOT requires it. I understand that they may not, to enable that road to come out directly across. But the essence of what I'm saying is, we want to work with the developers. And I'm speaking for the association. But just wanted to remind the developers that individual landowners are, you need to, they might want to talk with me about the bylaws of the association to see what's legal in terms of changing property lines of the, I didn't, I didn't write these bylaws, okay? It is an association, chartered association with the state. And we're going to maintain that.
Okay, and if I could ask you to talk, you know, give that same message to the homeowners? Say, hey, you know, our rules say that you, you can't give up, you know, here's our rules reference giving up property and stuff?
Thank you.
Yeah, and that, and so I think that message, okay?
Awesome.
Anything else?
No, not for me.
I have one, just one question on the survey. I have a certified map filed in that county. Doesn't that carry precedent over somebody coming in and resurveying?
If there's a survey.
I've got a certified map that's on file in the county, without top ground res of the association.
Okay, well, I would recommend, ask that, Mr. Burnham, that you get, take a look at his, have your surveyor, I mean, the same as with the pin on the tree versus the pin on the ground, so.
Well, that's, that's available from the, the, and it's governed. And we all have, like, that's how I, that's what I use to, as a basis for what we do.
Okay, well, just if you would ask your surveyor to look and, before we get to the next meeting, respond to any discrepancies. So, okay, so Derek, did I cover you?
Yeah, I'm good, I'll have a chance to respond to questions from other board members.
No, this is your last, we're closing the board meeting, or the public hearing after this. Oh, if they ask questions, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay.
I've misread it.
As long as I have the opportunity to respond.
I think somebody's ready to ask you a question, so.
I think so too.
Okay, so you're good. Mr. Griswold, you had a question about timber harvesting and whether it has been done or not?
Right, no, whether it was ever certified, it was commented last month that we had to get a forester in. Did they ever get a forester in to certify it?
I'm pretty comfortable that's a question we're going to ask in our, our discussion. He, he did, he provided the number, but we're going to ask that forester to provide in writing that what he told and told us, or told Mr. Burnham, that Mr. Burnham told us, we want to read it from the forester directly. Does that make sense?
If I remember correctly, it was to be an outside, yeah, it was to certify it, not by his friends, buddies, or a cohort.
Yeah, we'll take a look at the ordinance on what, what it does. So, yeah, we'll take, we will take a look at that. Okay. Ms. Roy, I think, did I started going through your stuff? Did you want to reply to my replies? Please step up, I'm sorry, we should have done this long ago. Please step up the microphone, because we need to try to capture this so that we make sure we get all the answers covered later, so.
So one of the, I'm going to reiterate another point about the face value thing. I disagree about you not taking it at face value. And the reason why I brought up the registry of deeds that I just did a search for, the date may be in discrepancy, but it does exist as of May ninth. You've had a meeting since that time. And so for that specific reason, because Charlie stated tonight that it didn't exist, that there wasn't anything in the registry of deeds when he did his search, but the attorney also did theirs, when was the title search done?
June fourteenth.
So if this was recorded on May ninth, it should have been found. So that's why I'm saying, it was recorded in the registry of deeds on May ninth, that it was discharged. And so that should have been found, associated with this property. That's why I'm saying, I think it's really important that the board does its due diligence and asks for the specific information and evidence of it and not just go off, you know, the word of what's being said. The other thing about.
I'll go back to that question, was we looked at a title, which is an official document, but we probably need to disagree on whether we did our due diligence or not.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to insult you.
No, I don't take it that way.
But what, I'm just saying, this isn't the only, the only part where this has come up. And so I think, like, the ordinance says that the burden of proof is on the applicant. And if you don't have that in front of you, you don't have the answer in front of you in a document, then the burden of proof hasn't been met. And I'm saying that for the example of not only that that's what your responsibility is, but also that brings up the opportunity for an aggrieved party to be able to appeal a decision.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does.
I'm also trying to help you, I'm not trying to insult you.
I appreciate the help.
So the other thing was that on the preliminary plan, I think at the first meeting, there were multiple places on the plan where the surveyor said that quitclaim deeds would be the easiest way to alleviate the boundary line discrepancies. And I don't remember exactly what Charlie's words were about that. He, or I think he was saying that all the way back to the Supreme Court, whatever, whatever, that his surveyor is standing on that as the truth. But yet the surveyor on the plan said the easiest way to resolve the situation is with a quitclaim deed. So I do think that that is a situation that needs to be looked at carefully. I, I also, like Mr. Griswold is saying, has, you know, I have a survey that shows that those coordinates don't match these coordinates. And there is a twelve acre.
Yeah, we got your, we have your input and there, you know, that'll be part of the discussion.
Okay, and then, again, I'm not trying to insult you. I'm, I'm bringing these things up to try to help you in terms of the land use versus the comp plan and what the, what the legally binding document is to go by. This was one of the things that I addressed with the attorney when we were talking about, you know, town meeting stuff. And so I would suggest to the board that they review that with town council. I'm just going to leave it at that. I think that's a question that in your best interest, making these decisions, you should review that answer with the town's legal counsel.
Okay.
What, what specifically?
The, whether you're making your decisions off the land use ordinance or if you're making your decisions off the comp plan, because those two situations are not aligned in terms of what the buffering requirement is as a setback from the road.
Mr. Thibard, I will go to your comment on.
The comprehensive plan recommends that the town consider a policy that with cluster development, that a hundred-foot buffer be placed along existing roads. That does not go into effect until the land use ordinance is amended. And what the, what you have to make your decisions based on is the language in the land use ordinance, in my opinion.
Okay.
And we made an amendment to the land use ordinance, which required the buffer to be fifty feet. That wasn't in alignment with the comp plan, and so those two things aren't in alignment with each other, which is why I'm just suggesting that I think you should speak to an attorney.
Noted.
Thank you.
Okay.
And then the other thing is that when we're talking about all of these driveway entrances and whatnot, there has been a new driveway access to Route nine that has been installed in the last week, and I don't see that on this plan. And I don't know if that affects sightlines or not, but I think that that should be something that you follow up on.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Mr. Roy, who is not related to Ms. Roy?
Yeah. So my clarification question was, you had made a statement saying that this was for judging the completeness?
Not this, not the discussion we're having now. Completeness is a decision made.
Okay, so that's my clarification question was, we are talking about the substance of the application at this point?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure I wasn't saying things going off on the handle or anything like that, so. So my disagreement with whether previous activities affect what you can do currently is because there are laws that regulate the transfer of property after certain types of timber harvests and also if a timber harvest doesn't pull out temporary bridges and stuff like that, the new landowner can't utilize them because there are different standards for, you know, development versus for forestry. So there does need to be some clarification there, that it, it does have an impact on the future use. So that was what I was saying earlier, is important. And that's, the only thing that you responded to was the forestry side of things. No one asked about wetlands or anything like that. As for the stormwater drainage, responding to what the applicant is saying, fully understand how the stormwater drainage works. I just still think that it should be something that the board considers, is that, yes, it is in a low spot. Not all low spots in the town of Durham are resource protection, though. This one is. So I think that if we're going to allow developments to go through, it's important that we really take a very hard line on how we want to allow resource protection to be impacted. Because if you look at allowable actions with inside the resource protection, based off our town ordinance, there's nothing that allows stormwater drainage features. So that would be outside of what our town ordinance allows.
Can I ask a clarifying question of what he's saying?
Not yet.
Your turn will come.
Not yet.
I am trying to be ruthless and, and is that it, Mr. Roy?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, so asked, responded by a bunch of people, replied. So I am going to close the public hearing. So what that means is that the public doesn't get to initiate discussions, but I think it's fair to say that there are several board members who may ask questions of the public, the staff, or the applicant. So you've had your chance. Okay, so I will now say on the board, and I, Juliette, I'll start with you.
Thank you so much, okay. Couple of questions here, clarifying. Some of them were answered last time around, so that was actually a good somewhat process we went through. Heather, can I just ask where, how you found the encumbrance or discharge?
I went to the registry of deeds and I searched by the current landowner's name and it came up under the current landowner in town of Durham. And then you view the abstract view of it.
Yeah, 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 Dean Smith?
Yeah, I took a picture of it, I shared it to George, I can send you, or I can email the board if you'd like to see.
I just.
Yeah, Johnny found it too.
I mean, it has been discharged, so, but I'm happy to forward that in the email to all of you if you'd like to see that.
Yeah, Johnny sent me it too.
And it's worth you all to go back to your title company and make sure that that, that's resolved.
If that discharged is not a.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if the, if the title search was after the discharge, then it wouldn't have come up anyways.
That's true.
Thank you. Let's see, what's next? Heather, again, so I think you were asking for a third-party review of the survey or, I don't know what we call that.
I think we've heard multiple times that the survey doesn't align with reported surveys that already exist.
Yes. Yes. I just wanted to confirm this, but I think you said.
Yeah, and I, and I do, I think that when you go from forty-one acres to fifty-three, which is the exact number of acres that the current landowner is looking to retain, to me, that just signals a red flag. And so right now, what we have on record that you're using to make these decisions by is a survey that's given to you by the people who want this to happen. Not saying that I don't want it to happen, I'm just saying, I think it's the board's responsibility to verify these documents with a third party.
Okay, and one question to the applicant, is the number of acres that the surveyor surveyed listed in here somewhere?
I'd have to look at the survey plan itself, but otherwise my.
Like you said, he gave you fifty-three, right?
So then they give me, yeah, and then when he gives me the AutoCAD file, all the line work is to scale and I can just pick that polyline and it tells me how many square feet it is.
Is it Mr. Simquist, is that right? Okay.
I'm going to get the spelling after this, so I make sure I get it right.
I actually can spell it, I think. So I think you were asking for a peer review of the stormwater plan? Is that, okay, all right. And possibly wetland delineation you mentioned as well, okay. Joe, you asked, I'm just trying to get all these third-party reviews written down correctly here. Third-party review of wetland delineation, I think you mentioned forestry as well as timber harvesting you did as well. Was there, anything stormwater as well?
Concom thinks that since it was done outside of the growing season, it's pretty standard practice to redo it during the growing season to figure out if the existing line is accurate or not.
Yep.
And then my comment on the forestry was just pertaining to, you know, making sure that the board uses its ability to request the proper information, knowing that from the sidewalk, there's a pretty invincible violation with the crossing that wasn't permitted. It's all public access, you can just look up the permit, by rule permits on the main department agriculture and forestry site, and there's no permits for the, for the site for that crossing, so.
That's only good back to like seventy-six, isn't it?
Yeah, but the.
That crossing.
Uh, Mr. Burnham.
Five years, so.
It would, Mr. Burnham.
Either way, that's just one thing I would recommend. So if there's, if there was a permit that's not publicly available, it's a great opportunity for the forester to show that because they get copies of it.
Okay.
I'm sure they would love to protect it publicly, that one.
Okay. Yeah, and you mentioned the permitting for the forestry, but also wetlands crossing RP. So I think possibly what you're saying is a third-party reviewer for wetlands that can also look at permits as well.
Well, I was just going to say that with the, the wetland crossing, there's an area that, you know, the applicant referred to that it seems as if some of the wetlands were expanded by forest activity, which happens and that there's still wetlands. That's why sometimes it ends up hurting people if their forest, forest use of a person has wetlands. But there's a couple of spots that were crossed that could potentially actually be streams because they have a defined bank with water percolating on the ground indicating at least an intermittent hydro period. So if those are impacted by forestry, that's something to consider because if a forester or an operator that disturbs that impacts the footprint of the stream, it might impact the crossing that you want to use if you're going across the road or anything like that. So just due diligence thing there.
Okay.
All right, I rest, thank you.
Okay.
So my clarifying question is, I'm not fully understanding where you think the stormwater treatment area is and what the issue is?
Yeah. Do you want me to have the microphone for this one?
Yes.
Yeah, well, yeah, I guess I'm sorry, we should always try to do that to make sure we capture. Yeah, well, yeah, I guess I'm sorry, we should always try to do that to make sure we capture it. And if you need to point on the drawing, that, that may help to.
Latest plan moved it.
Okay, so the sketch of, of, of the few previ- previous plans were showing it, it within the um resource protection area. So that's why caveat of my discussion was saying that the sketch that I had last seen had it in the resource protection area and that we just have concerns about that as a conservation commission. So if it's not in the resource protection area, it's not a concern of the conservation.
And if Mr. Burnham would show us where the latest plan is for the resource protection area. Excuse me, the stormwater, thank you.
I have it on my computer here.
So the resource protection limit is here.
It's a hundred feet off of that stream.
Yeah, and so my underground water is right on the top edge of it.
Yeah, so we're all.
It's in, it's in existing disturbed area, it was kind of my, and it's in the.
All our recommendation as a conservation commission is that if it is in the resource protection area, to consider moving it out of the resource protection area. So if it's not in it, it's a, it's a moot point, so.
So on the, the current plans that you've submitted.
Was that my last, sorry, last question for me?
Yeah, that's it.
Well, pa-.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And for Charlie, related to this, that on the current plan submitted, where is the resource, which plan shows a resource protection area?
It's out in there, it's that little dash line.
See this line right here?
It's got two labels on it, yeah.
And this is a hundred foot setback from the stream, but this is the RP.
So you're not sho- not showing the uh, that storms.
I put an arrow showing its general location, but I didn't, I didn't wanna keep things.
It looks like a pond.
It's not, it's well filtered, right?
Yeah, it's a, yeah, depress.
It's a foot and a half deep.
Depression's well filter.
Oh, there's a, there's a trench or something going into it.
There's soils that come into it and it's got a little, yeah, it's got a burb around the top of it, sits maybe three deep.
So that's not being shown, is that what you're saying?
All right, well, that, that satisfies me, we'll probably ask for clarification on exactly.
And we'll, we'll get into more of the does, design of it and.
I'm good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Alan, did you, is that it for you? I'm sorry, Ron.
Yep. I don't have any question, maybe a comment. And it, I think it's great that individuals are bringing up information that we may not have been aware of when there was a discrepancy. It certainly is our responsibility to do the due diligence to make sure that that discrepancy has been resolved. Uh, just an example of certainly my concerns. It's on a different subdivision that was approved, and I think it's, well, it's pertinent to any discussion that we have. The six-house subdivision that was approved on Royalsboro Road, one of the things that we do when any subdivision comes off a state highway, it's matter, it's the responsibility of the main department of transportation to approve the site both ways. And there is huge concern with Royalsboro Road up here when you're coming out of there and you're turning left. And that has been brought to uh the road commissioner's attention, and he is following up with it in the DOT. Those are the things that, when we look at third-party, until, many times until we find that there is a discrepancy, we may not be aware of it. And that's what I, what I'm suggesting. And until somebody brings that to our attention, usually there's nothing, we may have already ruled on it, in this case, we had already ruled on it, but it is a problem.
So Alan, you're saying support of third-party reviews and certain things?
Yes, definitely, definitely. I mean, that, that is our due diligence and that is our responsibility.
Okay.
We knew there was issues on that driveway.
Well, we certainly, I, I know.
We'll save, we'll, we can save that discussion, that's a long discussion, uh, but I mean, not to, not to cut you short, but that, that's a very good point.
I don't have anything specific, but I, that's second what Alan said.
Okay.
There's enough in here that um probably be good to get, get a third-party.
Yeah, and I think to, to a lot of your points, what he asked us to do stuff, we'll, we will take a look at that as part of the preliminary plan approval. And uh, third-party peer reviews are absolutely something that we, we need to consider as we go forward. So, uh, I think we've, we've done it, and if there's no more questions, what I'd like to do next, and I know it's getting late, is uh to kind of keep this process moving, is to at least start on the town planner comments, many of which address some of the issues that were raised tonight. And so if we're okay with that, going to maybe nine o'clock and uh see where we are at that point.
If, yeah, and I'll, I'll be really brief, because I did provide written comments to the board.
So they're in the, I was just gonna ask you, they're in this packet?
Yeah.
Yeah, part two.
Part two, way down at the bottom?
Yep, uh, under new business substantive review, preliminary plan application is the heading on the ti- top of the page of my notes. It's right after the public hearing, town planner comments, the next page.
Oh, so at the top?
Yeah, it's, looks like the fourth pa- third or fourth page. New business substantive review.
Got it, thank you so much.
Yeah, yeah. So a lot of questions have come up about the surveys, and I did indicate in my comments that the board is not a court of law to judge between competing surveys. But the applicant has a responsibility to provide you with a certified survey plan. Uh, I would point out that the survey plan that's been submitted is not certified, and that will be a requirement for the preliminary plan approval. Um, and so it, the survey itself says there are questionable areas. And they seem to be along the perimeter where you have uh two different sets of indicators of lines. And the question becomes is, are those discrepancies of questionable title affecting the applicant's submission in terms of meeting the open space requirements? Because they're required to set aside fifty percent as open space. So you may want to require the applicant to show documentation, you have his testimony, but we've talked a lot about due diligence tonight. I don't think you have any plan that shows you clearly the disputed areas and the calculations of how much open space. So just simply getting a clear documentation might be adequate to, to resolve that. But the board does not have authority to judge between competing survey claims. That's for the courts, and any person who's aggrieved of that can appeal the decision based on that. So that was one issue that I advised. Second one was the issue of the buildable lots, and I had pointed out on the last iteration of this plan that lots six and seven, I hadn't really addressed uh this lot. But my concern was uh this lot here, you can see there's this large wetland area that comes right down through the middle of it. So this was actually constrained, and in, in my just rough, rough eyeballing it, this seemed to be uh less than fifty percent between the, the open areas. So I suggested that that needs to be carefully reviewed, documented. Charlie, as a response, has expanded the lot, these two lots that were questionable into the open space to meet the technical fifty percent standard. However, that doesn't really change the issue of, this is where they're gonna have to build, they're not gonna build back here. So if, if they're gonna continue with this uh configuration, they do need to meet fifty percent, but the board may want to require, because what happens is if this is constrained by that wetland, and you've seen it, I think, on some recent subdivisions, that they, the homeowner and developing, whoever's developing this lot, is gonna be urged to push into that with their filling operations. So what I've done on other subdivisions in other towns that I've worked with is to basically say for any lot like that that is questionable, the board could require a site plan for the development of that one lot, and a conceptual grading plan can be put as detail like stormwater and everything else. And whoever develops that lot has to follow that grading plan. And if they want to change it, because they're doing a different design or whatever, all they have to do is come back and submit a new site plan for the planning board to review to verify that there's not gonna be any impact on these wetlands from the development of this constrained area. And it may well be, but, you know, Char- Charlie can make the case, oh, you know, there's, there's plenty of land, and we don't need to do that.
And that would be part of preliminary, before you got preliminary plan approval.
Or it could be a condition of preliminary approval if they accept it, but they'll do a, a grading plan for this one lot, and that'll be part of the, the final plan approval. Uh, the other option is to reconfigure the lots as they've done, to basically put this wetland into the open space and not have those be part of lots, which is another way to eliminate the issue.
And I, for the boards, it's not that we're not gonna discuss this. What I'd like to go through is all these comments of the applicant and, and those of the, know that we're, what we're covering.
Yeah, and we have a better position next time to.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get into more, or we can continue on this evening, uh, if we'd like, so.
Yep. So the next issue was the, uh, the intersection offset, and I think you've seen some, uh, discuss, here is some discussion of that. Basically, you don't want diagonally across intersections, because then you get people making turns, they don't know who's got the right-of-way. And it's a fairly busy road, obviously, with the school and with the commuter traffic. So those should be directly across from each other. They've moved it over as far as they can within that fifty-foot right-of-way, and it's better, and that may be enough. So that would be an issue that, and again, given the Wingate Farm subdivision on Royalsboro Road, I think that you may want to have that reviewed by a traffic engineer, uh, as a peer review. Just to say, is this realignment adequate, or do they need to talk to him, Timber Oaks, about getting that fully realigned? That was that issue. Um, fire protection, uh, I've given my interpretation of the ordinance that there must be an onsite water supply for this subdivision. And the standard is ten thousand gallons base, and then two thousand gallons per house. And that can either be an underground tank, cisterns, or it can be a fire pond. If it is a fire pond, it has to be a hundred and twenty thousand gallons. The ordinance subsection C of that section says that volume can be reduced with the fire chief approval of residential sprinklers in all of the hu- all of the homes. Past decisions on subdivisions have said it can be entirely eliminated. I think that is not consistent with the ordinance and, uh, but it can be reduced. So the applicant in his latest submission has said they are now proposing and trying to get fire chief approval of a fire pond with thirty-six thousand gallons and, but, no sprinklers. And if that is not acceptable, they're saying they're gonna put a dry hydrant by the stream. If they put a dry hydrant on the stream, that needs to be verified that it has adequate water supply, and it's not gonna be dry in the summer with no water. So those are all the dynamics of that discussion of fire protection. But I believe the ordinance does require an onsite water supply system unless the board grants a waiver. You do have the authority to grant a waiver on that, if they apply for it.
And we'll follow up with the chief to get an answer on that be.
Yep, yep.
Sooner rather than later.
And then uh the issue of interconnections, that hammerhead, there's undeveloped land to the west of this that goes up over to uh Dire Road and back out to Hollowell Road. The ordinance says the planning board, whenever it approves a subdivision with a dead-end road, should consider interconnections, and that's something you could require. The applicant has indicated he's, they're willing to give a right-of-way from that hammerhead over to the property line. That road would never get built until someone else develops it, or fifty years from now. Uh, the town comes in and because the traffic is so bad, that easement is there, and the town, or state, or somebody decides to develop it, the rights are there to do it. Uh, the timber harvesting has been discussed too, and I did point out from the get-go that the ordinance requires a li- either the Department of Conservation, Agriculture, and Forestry to come and verify that no violations have occurred, because timber harvesting has been done within the last five years. Or a licensed harvester has to provide certification. That has not been done, so that's something that you need to consider. Uh, you've already gone over the conservation commission uh comments tonight, so I don't think I need to address those. I think you have a pretty good handle on what their issues are.
Thank you, George.
Oh, and one, one last one is, there needs to be, I agree with the conservation commission, the applicant has proposed taking out the existing stream crossing. Uh, and that needs to be reviewed, I, I'm pretty sure they would need a DEP permit to do that. And so it'll be a D- DEP permit for the street, for the new stream crossing, and a DEP permit for the stream alteration of removing that impediment and restoring it. So that should be part of the DEP Army Corps review process.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my point to.
Well, I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure you noted that word, that require, you understood that requirement.
Sure.
Okay, and we, we have two more. George, if you go over them quickly, maybe there's more than two, but uh, high-intensity soil survey.
That was, oh, we didn't address that, I'm sorry, Joe didn't address that. They had suggested a need for a high-intensity soil survey. And I explained that this, this, you know, I'm familiar with the National Resource Conservation Service. Uh, years ago, back in the nineteen nineties, they did a new system for soil evaluation. They went beyond agriculture to development of properties. And it's a very generalized, uh, nationwide recommendation for communities to consider this in developing regulations. But generally, if you apply those, most of Southern Maine wouldn't pass. So it's, I, I don't know of any community in Maine that applies that as a standard for reviewing development. Now, if there are particular locations on this property, or, or based on the soil test pit logs, indicators of extensive hydric soils, or shallow to ledge that's gonna affect the construction of the subdivision, uh, you may want to put that area of the subdivision into the peer review discussion that you're gonna be having on the engineering, to see if, like, say if it's crossing those wetlands that they talked about, does there need to be some sort of a geo- uh, uh fabric to support that road beyond just the standard construction? So I, I think that issue can and should be handled as part of a general peer review, as opposed to requiring a high-intensity soil survey. That's just my opinion.
And if I may, wh- what are hy- clarify for me what hydric soils are?
Those are wet soils.
Wet soils.
They have groundwater table within a certain issue, and they're wet.
I gotcha. There's not a particular type of soil, clay?
There are various soils that.
That are wet, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so we, I guess I will leave it up to the board at this point, it's eight-thirty. Um, and being retired, I get to sleep late tomorrow, but would we like to start uh going through a couple of these uh comments from George? And then to see if we had, well, any questions on it first, I guess, about what he's asking other than my question about hydric soils and your thoughts on the board about um whatever it may be here, what he talked about. Are there any go-through of them at that at this point?
One thing that would be helpful is for you to give me an indicator of what you think should be peer reviewed.
I was just gonna.
What I would do is, I will, for the next meeting, whether you get through it or not, I will draft up a set of preliminary approval conditions addressing what we've discussed up through this point in the process. So that, like with the completeness letter drafts, you'll be in a position, and you can add to it, delete from it, whatever you want to do. So if I had some indication of what you're thinking about for peer reviews, based on what you've heard from the public input?
I think that's a good place to start.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, so I'm not sure we can't make decisions on that today in terms of what we want for, for, to use the last thirty minutes or so to.
And again, you'll actually vote on it at your next meeting, but this would at least say, what do you want me to put into a draft set of conditions? And you don't even necessarily have to say, I wouldn't support that, just say, I think we should have that up for discussion and a decision.
We're talking third-party?
Yep.
Okay.
Peer reviews.
And, and just one comment on this, I think that it is really important to talk about this early on, because I think depending what we decide, some of them need to be done first. Like, if we decide wetlands, we need to know if those are correct before he does stormwater, or something like that, right? There's like a order, like, they can't all be done at once, you might need, I'm just saying out loud here.
Here, here's my, my read on it and suggestion is that, look, it can't be we do a peer review and then, then we go to the next stage.
No, I'm not saying that.
What should happen is, you identify the areas, wetlands, stormwater, traffic, whatever it is. Uh, you list them, we submit, you vote on it. Because some people may think it's important, other people may not. Whether the majority decides for a peer review, we will then, based on a preliminary approval condition, get those peer reviews done. Start them immediately after preliminary approval. While they're going to the DEP for their permits at the state and Army Corps, the peer reviewer will do the peer reviews of the application. The technical review will qualify professionals. And then the applicant will have an opportunity to review those before it comes back to you. And a lot of times they can worry, it's just a question of, you know, did you provide this, they can provide it. So when it comes back to you, you will have the professional peer review evaluations of whatever issues it is, and we won't have to keep going with the process. You'll have the information that you need, and it'll be a couple of months here to get that done. Give them an opportunity to review it when it comes back to you, you've got the information that you need to make your final decision quickly.
I think clarifika- my question on clarification is, um, we have sixty days from today to get that, to get that done. So if.
Oh, the sixty days to make a preliminary approval decision, including what peer reviews you want for the final, just to clarify, yeah?
The question is, do we need to, if we know what we want, uh, I go ahead and refri- I go ahead and rephrase it. Are there any peer reviews that are essential to a, to a preliminary plan approval?
No.
And I'll turn, turn, turn to here. Is there anything that we think needs to be done with the recognition, you know, a recommendation that, you know, just 'cause you get prelimi- if you get preliminary plan approval and, and you've got a lot sitting in a, uh, wetlands, we're, we can still tell you to move the, the lot or move the house, or whatever it may be?
Couple of my concerns of the road, uh, alignment with Patriot Way.
Mm-hmm.
And if, you know, like, it's still, they've done as much as they can within the land they have, but it still doesn't align. So I'd like to, you know, have, take that a little further. You know, will DOT recommend that it absolutely has to align, or is what they've done okay? I'd like to get some more.
Yeah, I haven't heard back from DOT yet, but hopefully.
Well, no, but the, the lesson I take that, that Alan was talking to is that we don't wanna rely upon-
Sure.
Nothing against DOT, but I think that general consensus is that that particular Royalsborough, whatever that road is, wasn't, should not have been approved in, in, in probably my unprofessional opinion, but also the, the Ra Road Commissioner and stuff like that. So what we'd like to do is, is if, you know, if DOT approves it, but our peer review says that's still not unsafe.
Yeah.
I guess I'm saying DOT may not be enough.
Yep.
Yeah, I think like we, having a traffic engineer peer review of that situation to provide a good recommendation to us, you know, is that an okay situation, or is that something that really should be corrected?
And I thi- I, I would think that if you can work with the butters and there's an easement available there to move that, you don't even need to have DOT involved.
No.
Because you've got, we, we logically come up and said, this is the best solution to this.
Sure. What did you get, right?
Why, why even?
Take place of the peer review.
Well, DOT has to, bless it.
Well, DOT has to, but I'm saying we can get there before that.
So you're saying they might, they might come to the table and say, okay, we're gonna do what we need to do just to align it.
Yep.
And it's a done deal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the DOT says, wow, you guys are, you're on top of this.
And then peer review won't matter really either.
The other big one for me would be, um, the stream crossing.
Yeah.
I want, yeah, I don't want just some words on what that looks like and how it's done. I want a design, I wanna, I wanna picture of what it's actually gonna look like in real life when it's done.
Isn't like a grading plan? You wanna, I mean, there's a cross section, there's a grading plan, and there's, as far, you're talking about the existing crossing?
No, the new.
The new one.
Well, my, my understanding is with the existing crossing, which was in violation, you cannot continue to use that.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess to that point is, and I would argue with the, the legality of that existing crossing is, is, yes, it was logged in the last five years, but that crossing, that land has been logged throughout the last fifty years, and I-
There was no, there was no requirement fifty years ago?
There wasn't. It's probably, it's probably like nineteen ninety-six is probably when you had to have a, actually had a permit crossing. It's seventy-six or ninety-six, but-
My issue is, once we have discovered something that is in violation, I cannot ignore it.
But what I'm getting at is it's not in violation, if it was-
So that might be something for the legal folks, right?
If that, if that existed prior to that law.
This is why you get the certification from the licensed forester and they certify it. Or get DACF to come down and look at it.
So can I go back to, you had a good question, sort of.
Thank you.
Or no, not sort of, but you did, generally. Do we need these at this stage, I think is what you were getting at, right?
I, I, I think at what point do we need them to, to go for, and, and it may not be this, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
Is there some part of it that, that's not important? And then I have a suggestion that, on how to go about the, who controls the peer review.
Can I answer, can I talk about that first part?
Sure.
So, um, I think that it's actually in the developer's best interest to get these done ASAP because these are all going to, depending on what we choose here, are all gonna possibly change things, or maybe not. But we, we wanna know what that's going to affect downstream, no pun intended. You know?
Yes, you did.
You know what I mean? So my, my, my thought is get these going.
That, that, yeah, that, so I think that was, can we start at the peer reviews?
But if you do a preliminary approval at your next meeting, remember you have sixty days to make a decision. So we don't have time to do peer reviews, go back and forth. If you make that a condition of preliminary approval, it goes to peer review, and the peer review says this stormwater detention basin needs to be moved, you can make changes at the final approval stage too. So whatever changes they make as they get their peer review inputs, that'll come back as the final plan, and those changes can be incorporated into the final plan.
I mean, how do we make decisions on things in the prelim plan stage if we don't know?
Pretty much what you're doing at the preliminary plan, and I know this is an adjustment from the way that you've always done things, I understand that. But to try to get an efficient system for the developer, the applicant, for the board, for the public, you really need to make sequential decisions, like you do the sketch plan review, which says, yes, cluster is okay. You do the preliminary plan review that says basically overall, this plan can meet the standards of the ordinance. And so you give a preliminary approval based on that, that then gives them the confidence to go forward and invest the rest of the money for peer reviews, for state permits. And then it comes back and there's always some adjustments, but it doesn't change the whole subdivision to say, oh, it's not gonna meet the standards of the ordinance. So that's the way the process works in most communities that I've worked with.
Okay, and just process question, is there not an extension that we can give for the prelim plan?
With the, if there's some reason that you're saying, look, I can't, I couldn't even give a preliminary approval because I'm so convinced this doesn't meet the standards. You know, if I've got questions, that's different than saying, look, that doesn't meet the standards and I would not give a preliminary. And you're gonna vote, majority vote, on a preliminary approval or not, with conditions or not.
Is it fair to say that right now we're trying to raise things that we think could be deal breakers? That gotta be addressed, because it's no point moving forward if these-
Yeah, I mean, if they put in some form of fire protection that meets the standards, clearly it's gonna pass on that, on that, no.
Yeah.
If you're convinced that there's no water on this site, it's bone dry and it never had, never will have water, then you say, no, there's no way they can put fire protection on that.
Yeah.
What's the condition of it right now? I have no idea.
Well, no matter what, you can put a cistern out there and fill it with water. That's what most big developments do. We prefer to do a pond.
Yeah, so then my, my, my two, my two of the road alignment and the stream crossing.
Should we vote?
I agree.
So on the stream crossing, the fact that this is gonna go through DEP and Army Corps review on that new crossing, is that adequate? Or do you think you need to have your own peer review?
I don't think we need a peer review right now. I, but I want to, I wanna picture in my head what it looks like. And I can replan, so.
Yeah.
But it, you know, my, my vision is that the existing stream, you know, with the banks, it's not gonna be disturbed. You know, it's gonna be almost like a bridge going across there.
So my thought on that is I do want a peer review of wetlands, which that impacts wetlands and streams.
I'll draft one, and then you guys can vote on it at your next one.
Am I wrong in thinking that the guy who did my wetlands is on the Conservation Commission?
He was.
Fired him because of his wetlands.
No, we didn't fire him. He's a great guy. I know him. He's a great guy.
That has, that has-
That doesn't have any bearing at all.
Thank you, ma'am. So I think we discussed three exterior reviews, if you will. One is engineering, and I would say, uh, based on the questions we got, one is definitely the, the root, State Route Nine, intersection cha- interchange, whatever it may be there, that, that, I'm trying to think of, I think that we'd want on the engineering view, which is that intersection drainage came up.
So I think these could be different, different topics.
Yes, so I will always recommend on every subdivision that you hire a traffic, a peer review of the engineering analysis because I am not qualified to review engineering plans.
Okay, and that would include the things-
There, you'll get a technical enge- an engineer, objective, uh, paid through the developer's escrow, that will just review the plans and provide you the kind of input that I provide you on planning issues on the engineering, including the drainage.
Yeah, I, it's all encompassing, I guess.
Then, separate from that, that intersection requires a specialized engineering. It's typically a traffic engineer-
Bill Bray.
-transportation engineer, and they will give you an opinion, their professional opinion on whether that is safe or unsafe, and whether it needs to be adjusted or not.
And I guess, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, no, it's okay. Can I just make a point of clarification? When you say engineering, can we say stormwater engineering?
It's all encompassing, I think.
It includes everything. It's not just limited to stormwater. It's the road design, it's the road base.
Okay, so we're gonna, you're gonna get a big firm then that can co- I'm just thinking that there's niches, right? But you'll get a big firm to cover.
Yeah, we're talking at Gore Palmer. They do this for a lot of towns.
Oh, yep, okay.
So engineering is one, wetlands-
Traffic engineering is another one.
Traffic intersection.
Could, let me, I guess, the, the question I had earlier, is there a way to kinda tie all this together with the, a general contractor, for lack of a better term, on engineering? That somebody they would hire or have a traffic guy?
They may or may not be able to do all these things, and I'll check with Gore Palmer.
And I was just asking if that, not, then they hire-
That would be the easiest thing, obviously.
Yeah, Palmer's good. They can do a lot of it.
Yeah, and maybe he just says, I'll hire Talbot and Son, or whatever it's gonna be.
Probably have everybody that, they may or may not have.
I guess-
Tom Gorel is like one of the best in the state on traffic impact peer review, so traffic engineering, I think they do.
Yeah, and I get, my point is that that way it's all tied together. Because if the interchange changes, the drainage changes, so if we've got somebody who comes in and says, look, and I've looked at it all, including wetlands locations, and it's all good, or here are the issues. Does that make sense of, it's sort of, there's a general contractor and he subs to, to wetlands, and forestry may be a standalone.
Forestry, I think, is separate. You need to require a forester letter, or DACF, and they can contact DACF.
That was my third one, is engineering, all encompassing, what-
You said forestry, that's separate, right?
That's not a peer review, in my opinion.
So what I'm thinking, and what we've heard today, is it could be a peer review, or it could, um, bring in in the state, like you mentioned, or a forester, but also permits with that. So someone looking at the permits that need to be done, or should have been done. It's kinda like to get, same with wetlands.
Yep, so I can put that on if you want. Me to put on a peer review of the, um, forestry practices, including required permits. I'll, again, I'll draft it in and then you guys can vote on it.
Yeah, we can talk about the difference with that and what you were, the state, right?
I think those are the three big topics, is engineering, uh, in my mind, including traffic, but the, the traffic piece, the wetlands piece, and then, then forestry.
So wetlands is also the permitting as well with that?
Yep.
Um, we also somewhat talked a little bit about, um, boundary.
Again, you guys do not need to judge surveys against each other.
Or, or not, so, so again, so maybe have a legal person look at it, or someone look at it with all the discrepancies we saw?
I think what you're saying is that's not our jurisdiction.
I think if the, the, a butter has issue with their survey, then that's his, um-
Fight to fight?
Fight to fight.
Exactly.
They can appeal it, is what it would be.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that the same, same thing for someone to review the, um, the title for encumbrances and things like that?
If the board wants to have the town attorney review any legal issues, you can do that.
Okay. Is that on your list, or is that something separate?
Uh, it is not on my list yet. If you want me to put it on, it will.
Yeah, like it's an attorney to look at, at least, I wasn't sure if it goes on that list or not.
It is now.
And again, you'll vote on it.
She signed that discharge paper, so that review should be quick.
It's, somebody just has to do another title, as Heather did, another title search post the encumbrance being removed.
I'm assuming the applicant has an attorney that can address some of these issues for you?
Well, I'm, my question would be, can we just go back to the title, a title company? And do a new title search, so that, that cost is on the applicant.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, does the discharge, recorded discharge-
If there's nothing there, then it's not, you know, it's done on-
Well, no, she found it and John, he showed it, everybody found it.
He should have included it on his title search.
Okay.
Unless it was discharged. You wouldn't include something that was-
Yeah, it sounds like it was discharged before the-
Title search.
It was.
Well, here's the question. It'll be done on fifteen July, or whatever, and whatever is there.
Yeah.
And we might just make a note to your title company to say, show us the paperwork, make a copy of the, there should be a discharge recorder or whatever, that would be part of all the additions or attachments to a title.
Sure.
So if we could make that as a special request, just because it's been discharged, just to answer the question, show us the discharge.
Okay.
Paperwork, if they can.
Well, that, that we know they can. I've seen it twice now, gotten it from both ends, I've seen it.
And if they can't, you know, it'll be a post, it'll be a fifteen July, or twenty July, or whatever it is, but then the cost is on you guys.
Yeah, great.
We have limited-
Should be minimal. You would think it'd be minimal, because he probably already knows it.
Yeah, it should be, yeah, it should be whatever they call, update or whatever it is.
Sure.
Hey, one thing that you mentioned earlier is that, um, with the violation, they aren't allowed to do something. They aren't allowed to do the crossing, or, or in certain area.
If, if something has been brought to our attention that there was a violation, we cannot ignore that.
Right. Do we know that? Do we all feel comfortable that we know what that violation, and is it all-
Well, I, I am trusting what Joe said.
So how do we figure that, I guess, how do we get our hands on that? Is that something that-
Again, you can request the ACF, or the applicant, you can request the applicant to get a licensed forester to give a certified opinion as to whether the harvesting that occurred on that property was in full compliance with all Maine forestry laws. And if you want to, you can get a peer review done of that.
Really?
Well, we're gonna hire, I thought-
Well, I think they should, I agree.
That's what the ordinance says. Oh, rigid language.
Yeah, I think it does say require in there, I remember.
George, yeah, there's four options that you can have to, that validate the way you cleared the lot. If you clear out fifty percent of the DP, DP diameter of the-
How long, how long ago was that clearing done, within the last five years?
Yeah, exactly, which is what brings this into effect. If it was, if it was outside of five years, it wouldn't matter whether it was done in compliance or not.
So it does matter.
This, this whole rule is intended that somebody can't go in and clear cut that property to oblivion and then sell it to somebody.
Right.
And get out of there.
So here's the language of the ordinance. The board shall ascertain that any timber harvested on the parcel being subdivided has been harvested in compliance with rules adopted pursuant, it gives the title, the statute reference. A five-year rule. If a violation of rules adopted by the Maine Forest Service to substantially eliminate liquidation harvesting has occurred, the planning board must determine prior to granting approval for the subdivision that five years have elapsed from the date the landowner and whose, under whose ownership the harvest occurred acquired the parcel. Determination by DACF or forester, the planning board may request technical assistance from DACF to determine whether a rule violation has occurred, or the board may accept a determination certified by a forested, forester license pursuant to the title.
We, we must do it then.
Right.
Yeah, and I think they-
Question about that.
Yeah.
So that's what you were talking about, though, was the tree clearing?
Yes.
In that part, okay.
Yes.
So we're clear on, or there's no other issues regarding that violation aside from the tree clearing piece?
Other what?
And Joe-
What about the access across the stream?
Right, that's what I mean. Like, do we know, like, so that might be something to legal-
Well, if, I, I'm saying if, if a permit was never granted, then it's in violation.
Unless it happened before the law went into effect requiring a permit.
True.
Yeah.
Can the forester not do that, or the AC, DC, A, whatever the acronym was?
DACF.
DACF.
They are forestry people, they write these rules, they'll come and look at it.
Yeah, I mean, I, we would just, when we ask them, we would just say, and specifically look at that crossing.
Preliminary plan approval could include, could include directing the town planner to contact DACF to seek a determination of whether a violation has occurred.
Yes.
Can we do that really quickly? Because I imagine they aren't quick.
Well, it'll be within that same time period of peer reviews.
Unless I can get the forester to find his certification, but he claims to have no computers, or know how to use email, or anything by chainsaw, so.
Or get another forester to-
Or get another forester.
I mean, that, that's a state agency, the, yeah.
They write, they, they write the forestry rules.
And it'd be good to go, get a request into them.
Yeah, I mean, if, if it's the town's responsibility, just-
No, 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 no.
Send an email saying-
We'll do that. Sorry.
You do that, or I do that?
No, we do that.
I'm willing to put it on as a preliminary condition of approval. If you wanna pursue it, you can do that independently.
I, I think, um, so my, sorry, this was very quick off the cuff here, but it's almost like a third-party thing.
Right.
So it shouldn't come from the applicant.
But DACF will be doing the determination, not them.
Right, I know, I know.
They're just initiating.
I know.
So it's almost like doing the Historic Preservation Commission, or calling-
But it does say the planning board, the planning board may request that.
Yeah, so, you know.
I will, I will do it.
Okay, I, that's-
How about it?
And some of these, quite, Mr. Advocate, is you now know that we're going, what we wanna do. So if you have a responsibility to, like, DOT and Historical and whoever else is out there, time, your time is on, you know, you need to get started, I guess what I'm saying. So we may give it the formal requirement in August, but there's nothing to stop you from requesting it now. If you wanna keep this thing, and I need to close with, there's no guarantee of approval on anything we've discussed tonight. We still have a long way to go.
Sure.
Okay. Is there anything else other than the one thing I forgot to do?
I actually have one comment generally. I actually have one comment generally. Are the easements shown on here? The CMP, there's a CMP easement, right?
It wasn't CMP, who was it?
It's a utility.
It was CMP.
Wasn't CMP?
Yeah, well, the title said so-and-so Dewitt Industries gave it to-
Yeah.
Central Maine.
Is that on here? And then there's also one other easement that's shown on the, it's a condition-
That might be that, I, yeah, I, I didn't see them in the survey. I don't know what he was talking about, whether it was-
Well, sometimes they're not on there.
So it was shown in the title report as well?
Yeah.
So let's-
It was on the title report is where I saw it. There was a CMP easement on there. Sometimes those are off the property.
And there was one other one, and I think it was an access.
Yeah.
It might have been, I don't know.
Okay.
If you could put those in there.
But the remaining, her point is that, rather, if I may, is if there's an easement on the title, make sure it's-
Yeah, right.
Or tell us that it's off the property, whatever it may be. Is there anything else on this subject? If not, I will close that part of it and say that I forgot. We need to approve the minutes, don't we? I forgot to get a-
You accepted them.
Okay, that's good, then we're done. I didn't scroll.
Oh, wait, we need a motion to-
Vote to close.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Next meeting. It's a good motion.
Who's voting?
Before we adjourn, when's our next meeting?
Oh.
Um, what's the first Tuesday? That sounds right. I don't have my thing, anybody have a count?
It's Wednesday.
On the third.
August third, August sixth on Saturday. I will not be here for that.
No, me neither.
Yeah.
Yeah, August, August third or sixth.
August sixth, I, I, I've got a wedding in France that weekend, so I'm gone.
Poor thing.
Please have somebody else cover for you.
But August third is good, like, for you? Let me start with you.
No.
No, he said it's not.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said the sixth. Oh, okay.
But we have a scheduled meeting that day, and as they will tell you, I don't like to change scheduled meetings.
So you have someone that can stand in for you?
Well, I'll figure that out.
He didn't like to do it today either.
Yeah.
So it's not just, you know, the public or engineers, but, um, yes. And then I guess the last question is, please try to make, we're now kind of locked in to the folks who sat here tonight. Need, at least three of us need to be there throughout the rest of the process because we've got, you know.